Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning. For facilities and I'm here with my team and I'll let them introduce themselves. We're gonna talk about the slowly and ask for some direction.
Congratulations.
Go ahead.
This is exciting. Thank you. This is awesome, by the way.
Kyle Berg, project manager.
My name is David Richards, manager of planning, design, and construction for facilities. So we're gonna start with a little bit of background about the project, get you all up to speed, and then we'll go into the purpose of this presentation. So to start with, the FFM department did an assessment in twenty twenty four with consultant of the public hearing room. The consultant concluded that the main point of non-compliance with the public hearing room was the lack of wheelchair designated spots on the upper level room. And so in order to meet minimum requirements, we would have to add designated positions on that top level. Moving beyond compliance, the consultant also recommended a number of improvements that would improve accessibility of the public hearing room. The most significant one that they recommended was adding a ramp that would take you from the upper level down to the lower level. This provide multiple paths of this would provide multiple paths from the upper level to lower level and make it a more inviting place for all participants. So we presented in February twenty twenty five, a range of design options to the board. Uh, the span from the minimum amount to meet requirements of the American built these act all the way up to a more comprehensive approach that would make the public hearing room more inviting to all participants. The board directed staff to move forward with that more comprehensive approach. The base design that the board recommended would be forward with had multiple locations designated for wheelchair accessible seating. And also have multiple routes to get from the upper level down to the floor. Um, those being a designated ramp and also existing wheelchair lift would be updated and be located the same location. And so additionally, at that same meeting, the board requested that we explore further enhancements to that design. And then return with our findings of those enhancements. And that is the purpose of today. We are returning to present our findings of your recommendations from the last meeting. Um, we'll discuss those potential additions to the project. And then our purpose is to hopefully get your input on what the final scope of the project will be, if we will include any of those in that project. And so with that, I'm gonna turn to project manager Kyle Burke.
Thank you, David. So today I will start by reviewing the scope that was previously approved in a study session, just to refresh your memory. And then we will move on to reviewing the optional additions, which include a speaking podium at the upper level at the back of the room. Adding a row of seats as well to the back of the room. Uh, and a potential new pathway to the wheelchair wheelchair lift from the commissioner's dais. And then we'll go over next steps, assuming that we have the approval of the board to proceed. So this is the overview of the scope that was approved previously. Uh, as you can see, the ramp added to the east side of the room with several uh, well, total of four wheelchair compliant seating areas added around the room. We would also add signage, uh, and as David mentioned, replace the lift. And this scope was estimated at two hundred fifty thousand dollars. Everything that we're gonna review today um, for your approval is optional. If none of those are selected, this is what we plan to do. We wanted to talk through the design process of with the speaking podium a little bit. Um, as David mentioned, it was brought up by the board, the idea to create a podium at the back of the room at the upper level, a ground level so that people don't have to descend the stairs to the presentation area to address the board. Um, when we, the project team met several times to go through this, multiple multiple locations were considered. And while considering those options, we put emphasis on the elements on the screen in front of you uh, to determine the optimal placement of that speaking podium. Those include maximizing the number of wheelchair seating areas. Uh, the option to add seats to the upper level, sightlines of the speaker and the commissioner for at that new podium's location. Reducing the total number of seats in the room lost, like lost because of construction, as well as reducing path of travel, path of travel difficulties for somebody who may be mobility limited or in a wheelchair. And this is what we came up with. Uh, the podium is a sta- in a stage left position at the back of the room. We felt that this had the highest level of accessibility for a couple of reasons. Uh, one is that it allows the speaking podium, the top of the ramp, and one of the accessible seating all to be very close to one another. Um, and it also allows for two wheelchair seating areas on the upper level. You can see the other one on the opposite side by the closet. Um, we were able to maintain two on the upper level, whereas one of the other options forced us to reduce only to one.
Wait, so can you talk, so the added seats are are those accessible seats or those are just added seats?
Those are just added seats at the back of the uh, the back of the room. So they're at ground level, which makes it easier for mobility limited visitors. Currently, if somebody using a cane, a knee screwed or something like that, has to go down at least one step to get to a seat to sit. This would put them at ground level, so they don't have to do that. We would also install a type of seat that accommodates somebody who may not be comfortable in one single seat. They would have armrests like our sheriff's deputies come in, they have their big belt, their big belts on, they can't sit in one of our seats. Um, so these would have like be fixed seats with raisable arms for anybody who may not be comfortable in a single seat.
Alright, thank you for explaining that.
Uh, and then, yep. And then this, I just wanted to give you an idea of what it would be like for yourselves and the speaker. Uh, if we were to put the podium in this location. Uh, it's nice clear sightlines. When I took these pictures, I did realize how dark it is there at the back of the room, so we would do something with the lighting to improve lighting there. So that you all would have a better view of the person, but
We know people who do that.
Yeah, we know people who can do that.
Just because I could see it in this picture now, the additional seats that you were talking about in the back of the room. So there's that raised wall in the center that that gonna be going away?
It would, it would go away.
Alright, great.
Yeah, there's a little bit of a note there. It's kind of hard to read, but it says, uh, exists existing half wall would be demolished in its entirety. That would bring that down. Um, so that people could see.
Great, thank you.
So I appreciate um, this, and you may get to this later and you can like, hey, we're gonna get to that later. Um, to comment at public hearing, you have to sign in. So what is the plan or accommodation for the sign in process? Um, when the clerk is going to be seated five layers down? I think the sign into the lobby. Well, but once Erica takes her seat, like, you know, as they're moving through the public hearing process, you know, if they're coming in for land use and they know the land use is like an hour or they come in, they're like, hey, you just stay at the coffee shop, we'll call you when the land use is up. They come in, if we're trying to do ADA accommodation and and Erica's not gonna run back and forth to the lobby. So what does sign in look like and how how does this work with the clerk and her current function?
So currently we're working on the process. There's a number that's at the sign in right now is our front desk number. So we're working on that process to work with Erica. How do we continue that in a way that that seamless step, either they come in and ask for, or if they get to a location, we would know it already, or they can call back and get assistance. So we'll be ready when that person comes in.
Okay, um, I I would wanna hear that because I would wanna feel like if you're sitting in one of these added accommodation seats, the functionality of the clerk to the board um, can still be effective. Um, as well as the sign in mid-public hearing, because some of these public hearings, they're not all the the lightning round that we had today. Some of them are three, four, or five hours. And if you come in at hour one, two, frankly, if you come in ten minutes after the session is started, it's usually plenty of time to sign in for public hearing, public comment, but if a clerk is already seated five layers down. How do we make that determination? Is there a button? Is it digital? Like?
So we do have an internal, what I call rebooting process of our customer service team.
Okay.
Uh, we'll be rebooted long before this project will be done to make sure it's the seamless process with our customer uh, service team and where Erica sits and signs and puts the current process.
I don't understand what a rebooting.
In other words, we, so our front desk technically should be the per- the point person for if you need assistance. The phone number that's on that list right now is to our front desk. And then we, right now, it's sort of a tree, so if no one's sitting there, it goes to the second person. No one's sitting there, it goes to the third person, but we'll have somebody there with administrative access to get them.
Yeah, that doesn't, I appreciate that. I don't think that's gonna work in the practicality of a public hearing, but Kristen's got a problem.
Kristen, and then I see Lindsay's hand as well.
Yeah, let me just um, add a little bit to what Amir said. Um, so appreciate the question and some of these physical changes definitely require us to modify a few of our current practices and running public hearings. But I think we all believe that this will allow us to do all of those things in a more seamless way, in fact. Because right now, if you come in, for example, after the sign in sheet sheet has been taken down, um, you have to physically walk down. And so we can, we can put instructions, what Amir's referring to is we've recently put um, framed instructions around if you need mobility assistance, here's a phone number you can call so that you don't have to walk down or have someone walk down and talk to the clerk. So we can also uh, put instructions at the top of the room and at that now new speaker podium at the back, so you don't have to physically move in order to send a message to someone that can either arrive and provide assistance or deliver a message to the clerk that you intend to speak. Right now, you know that when the signed in people have concluded, there's also a call for, does anyone else wish to speak? This would allow that to happen with much shorter delay and also help people, you know, with the dignity of not having to physically make their way down to the bottom if it was difficult for them.
With the podium and like, holy, it's very all of us to see that happen.
We can safely get to our microphone without having to ask for assistance because it's all on that same entry level of the building and we're putting in supports with partially with Amir's staff as well as with um, Erica and team to ensure more seamless coordination around people who've identified that they need some assistance through uh, phone numbers that we have as well as, you know, we can enhance the sign in process a bit.
Okay, I would really appreciate that. I would um, like us to take into account a couple of variety of scenario, and this is utilization, not architecture. But I would like us to take into account a few scenarios. Um, there are times when we have one person who shows up, but there are those public hearings where we have twenty five, thirty people signed up and it could be really nice to have two microphones going for able bodied and people who might prefer to stay on one level. I would love to hear some technical adaptations or process that y'all have worked out with the clerk for equity in hearing from everybody and is that an IT solution? So the queue can be monitored no matter which microphone people go up to. If they're physically lining up, how do we balance back and forth? We'd just like some technical space utilization for fairness for everyone.
That's a very good point. Yeah, I think that we will and absolutely can look at how technology layers on top of these physical improvements so that we are creating more systematic approach, equitable approach to um, taking people's comments in a routine fashion that kind of treats them all.
Because sometimes neighbors all wanna testify in succession.
Yeah.
Um, I see that from applicants as well, like you're gonna hear this presentation and then you're gonna hear da, 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 da. They wanna hear in succession. In the legislature, they affirmatively are like, we're gonna have a panel of three pro, we're gonna have a panel of three con. Like, I don't know that we need to get in that much detail, but like, now that we've introduced a second podium. With love, some thoughtful, so all voices matter. And there's not like line jumping by any party. It's it's intimidating. It's rote for us. It's so familiar for us, but I still recognize how much people shake and are afraid. And it's their house, it's their livelihood, it's their neighborhood.
A lot of those principles were uh, considered in this suggestion to add this upper level podium because we're finding that a lot of folks don't ask for help because they don't want to identify themselves as someone that needs mobility assistance. And so we see people make that walk down who would otherwise benefited from some support. So that was part of why we introduced this new signage so that they could more privately ask for assistance uh, without having to self-identify in a room full of people. Uh, but this will provide us a much more seamless way for people to approach a podium that's at the upper level without having to ask for anyone's help or support. You'll hear in a moment, you can also always still ask for that support to get to the lift and we'll be making improvements to that lift as well, so.
And the ramp. Thank you. Those are my questions.
Obviously be one of the easiest ways.
Let's sound a bit more and bring back to you, unless we do need to talk with Erica, but just the practicality of it and bring back to you more details on exactly how.
And what IT supports might be available slash necessary.
Thank you. So Lindsay and then Steve.
Now, okay, question. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. Steve?
Uh, we go back to the picture or uh, let me sorry, the layout. I love this. Um, and initially in my mind, I was seeing the podium in the middle, but I think it makes sense how you're using the space and not taking up, you're you're increasing the amount of folks who could sit on that back row, who might be uh, mobility impaired or maybe not full on impaired, but even just challenged uh, based on on size and mobility of any sort, and I appreciate that. Uh, I also think that with some lighting, that podium over there makes a lot of sense. I think what we could do on both sides of the room is have a little button that has like little yellow light that could be very subtle. Uh, that if somebody says you need assistance and we, then when we see the light, somebody can walk back and figure out what it is without drawing attention, but also allow one of our staff members to be there and it's a, might be a subtle way to just say, oh, somebody needs assistance, I'll go back and see what's going on. And then we can work it out from there rather, because the phone makes sense, but I I'm not sure we're gonna be monitoring a phone number during the hearing, but um, there's a lot of things we could do, change management, I mean, you know, through the process, so I I appreciate what you guys are doing. I appreciate a hundred percent that you guys took this uh, feedback from us and that you've made the this proposal. I think this is gonna help us with our mission to try to be as inclusive as possible, uh, helping address issues of dignity and accessibility, mobility, if this is our, these are our values. And it's awesome to be able to improve transparency and accessibility for eighty thousand dollars. I mean, that's just amazing. So I I wanna thank you. I wanna thank the board for their patience as we've talked about this for a number of years and I I appreciate that we're funding.
Okay, give more options for us.
One more to go through.
We're not done. Stopping here.
Great.
It's a great solution.
The first one is for the public, the second one's for you.
Yes. Sounds actually, um, very important.
So that was comments from our last previous study session, raised exactly that. It's awesome that we're doing all that for the public. But what happens if a commissioner is elected who is in a wheelchair, or I think Steve, it was you who mentioned that you had some knee surgeries or something, you were on a scoot, yeah. You're on a scooter and and that was really challenging, so.
Opening for me, for sure.
So we took that back and we looked at what we could do to improve the ability for you commissioners to get down to the presentation area straight from the dais and the lift is the closest option, but the current, the current path of travel has you going back out through the old study session room around the hall to to get there. It's right on the other side of that stage left wall at the di- dais though, so if we what we'd like to do is put in a door, it'll be in about that third panel there off to the left. And it will go straight through the storage room, right into the lift vestibule. And that will just make a very direct path of travel down to the lift for you all.
Love it.
There's not a way to make a room?
There's not enough space because of the incline requirements on a wheelchair ramp. Um, it would have to be about thirty feet long.
Looked at that and it doesn't physically fit in the room because the change from where you sit.
Yeah, alternative that we can talk about lowering us so we're not always looking down upon the rest of the work.
Voted to put the dais where it is, this is so wild.
But I don't know how that's.
Very high. It's very high.
Feels uncomfortable.
Out of the scope of this meeting. So. Reason why I ask is because, right, just similar to uh, the public using a lift, a commissioner, we go down to the floor every meeting to take a photo. So somebody would have to go back there, do the lift, we have to wait for them, like, so it's, I don't know, a dignity thing as well. If you're an elected official who has to use a wheelchair, you should be able to walk with your colleagues. Same space, but um, I mean, I I get that we don't have the space, but yeah, it's I guess this is next best thing, but as a commissioner, I, you know, the the same thing impacts.
We agree with you.
Yeah.
And the existing constraints, I think, you know, unless we really remove the dice and kind of start over, and even so, I think the, I think we were gonna come up upon some challenges of creating a ramp that fits within the physical space of the building with, of the room with. Um, and so we suggested this for your feedback because it reduces that amount of time and the disruption of that extended path um, to the maximum degree possible. Um, and the lift will take a little longer than a ramp certainly, but this will shorten it a lot.
We already have a lid, it's just putting in the door. One door or two doors?
She means shorten the trip around.
Oh, yeah.
Path of travel going behind the study session room out to the hallway is the current.
I appreciate what you're saying. I think this is the best we got for now.
Yeah, yeah. I think it's fine. I mean.
Can't widen the room.
Just trying to think of a future colleague.
You're totally right.
Wanna be almost respected the same way as everybody.
Hundred percent.
Yeah, this was just the best we could get with what we have.
Yeah. And there's a cost estimate on the next slide, I believe.
Yeah. So the 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 pathway would be an additional fifty, so just adding it all up, the original scope that was approved previously was about two fifty, the podium and the added seats will be about eighty and the pathway to the lift from the dais will be about fifty for a total of three eighty. Um, facilities does have an ADA budget, but it's not quite enough to support this entire project. So there would have to be some sort of uh, additional funds increase of about a hundred and fifty, hundred and sixty thousand dollars to twenty twenty six budget.
Yeah, we can incorporate that in the annual budget process. We have sufficient funding to cover the amount that would be spent between now and the end of twenty twenty five. Um, but we wanted to inform you that any balance we would incorporate into the twenty twenty six budget.
I'm good with that. I just have a question. Um, that wouldn't deplete the ADA funding, would it? For this project, you would, are not, am I making sense?
Would it take away from other ADA efforts, you mean?
Yeah.
Twenty twenty five, I believe that answers yes of what?
So is it allocated every budget cycle, the ADA?
Yeah, so we identified program needs and prioritization, and this was one of those for this year. So this was planned for that budget for this.
Okay.
But.
We need to add ADA. I mean, I don't want it, I don't want this to deplete if there's also other needs in the county.
He said yes, let's let's dive into his his answer.
Sure, the annual allocation we have been receiving is about two hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Okay.
And we are, we prioritize and mark this project to uh, make sure this gets funded. So those adds, as Tom mentioned, would have to go into twenty twenty six, we would ask for.
What are their opportunity costs that would, this would be taking away from other ADA projects that were planned in twenty twenty six? If that's, that's how I interpreted your question.
That's correct, but I believe it depends on what's option you select. We will be taking care of, depending on which option, and then what we would end up doing over two seasons, you're looking at, even if you did three eighty. So we we have two fifty for twenty twenty five and another two fifty, we hope, within the budget process for twenty twenty six, so there would be some funding left. We look at the ADA list and we prioritize based upon what's most critical, uh, compliance, a number of items. And then if there's a need to ask for additional funding like we would do with this one, we would ask for that.
Okay, and we could also look at how much we allocate to twenty twenty six.
Yes.
Certainly, we can have a discussion about that.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that.
Kathy. Uh, thanks. Thank you very much um, for thi- this work. I think this is, I lo- I love the sensitivity to keeping the the new row of seating so that it's, we're not uh, requiring people to take steps at at all and down into, you know, into the well, um, as needed, providing the podium um, up on that level, as in addition to the ramp for anyone who would like to then come, who wants to be closer to the dais or use the podium down on the main, on the the lowest level. I think the ramp will accommodate a lot of people who want, not everybody maybe, but a lot of people who want to uh, come into the room that way and address, if they want to address uh, the board that way. Understanding the constraints of the width of the room, we can't magically make it wider, so, but I think the adding that the door um, on the sta- on on stage left to access the lift is is really an important add um, for the times that it's needed by uh, by commissioners or any any staff who who be up there. Uh, so I I really, I think you've covered everything we asked for, um, and I know that you'll continue working on making sure people can sign up and, you know, we'll find the best way to make sure that we're being inclusive there. So I want to say thank you. I think this is a this is good work and I think it'll be a great addition if we proceed with this.
We agree.
Okay.
Okay, anything else on this one?
Uh, just wanted to walk through some next steps. Uh, it sounds like you're want us to do the base scope, the ramp and both of the options we presented. Um, so we'll proceed with that guidance. So now that we have that direction, I will go back to our architect and we'll continue the design work. We estimate that'll take about three more months, uh, and then Uh, and then in that process, we'll also be procuring a. Construction manager, general contractor, CMGC to help us along with the design, uh, that will also be about two to three months. Um, and we hope to start construction in spring of twenty twenty six. Uh, and the duration is hard to pin down, that, that'll require input from the general contractor. Uh, and then the final bullet point I have down there, um, is just to start thinking about how this is going to impact operations during construction. And what the board might want to see. For how we're going to operate that, and we can work with the CMGC to keep the room open, that can always be a requirement, but it. Can increase cost, increase duration, that kind of thing. Um, so we just wanted to put in there to kind of get wheels turning on it, but we'll come back at a later study session when we have more of a construction plan to. Actually discuss that.
We'll develop options that you can give specific feedback to, but clearly, you know, you can contemplate setting up a substitute public hearing room, maybe it's a conference center. Might shorten the construction timeline, but you know, would be for a little while, a little different for all of us, but we'll develop specific options. And bring them back to you.
Thanks. I just had one thing to add. Uh, thank you first of all for this work, um, and even though the. We recognize that that room does meet ADA compliance, um, that this really enhances it for the public. Because nothing is more frightening than someone trying to traverse the stairs with crutches. Or, yeah, it's, that's a real concern, um, and I do appreciate and want to recognize Commissioner Malika's um. Thought of. The intimacy part of we all go out together, we all, you know, go on break together. If you can look at, and I don't want this to be like you're remodeling your house and we're doing a coat of paint and now all of a sudden we're going to like get the whole place. Um, but if you can look at the door behind the chairs on the dais. If that's ADA compliant, because that is also accessible from the back, the back elevators, that hallway, um. You know, in the future, whether it's injury or something else that uh, there's access by staff and commissioners. From the back study session room to the front of the, to the back of the dais. So that big wooden door and then whatever those accessibility or those three other doors.
Absolutely, okay, yeah.
Door's heavy.
You got a tank to get it to open motor. I'm sure there's a motor that could do it.
Probably, probably.
So, yeah, as we do that, there's a balance of security. Um, accessibility and how those things interact and ingress, egress and safe exit. And while the door is too heavy, I think for a person without um, some. Uh, leverage to open, so like from a chair, a wheelchair would be really difficult, or while holding crutches would be really difficult. Um, what, uh, how do, when we make those changes, be mindful about um, security as well. And safe exit. So the assistant opening the door. For who and how do you stop the assistance?
For this item, great, thanks for your time today.
Thank you, Christian.
Thank you. This is so important.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
And thank you for having us today to talk with you for our first of two study sessions today. Uh, this one on the West Seventieth Avenue Project Corridor. Uh, we'd like to talk with you a little bit about the uh, uh, project as, as a whole. And then get some guidance on our design approach. There we go. Uh, so West Seventieth Avenue, uh, for, for those unfamiliar, uh, is near the. Uh, intersection, I guess, of two twenty four and Broadway. Uh, two twenty four on the west side of the context map here is, uh, extends all the way over to our uh. Uh, Commerce City, uh, uh, I guess, side of that corridor. Uh, near our, our. Uh, Operations Office, uh, it's a pretty key corridor maintained by C dot. Uh, there's a Toyota dealership uh, in the, in the, at the junction of US thirty six and Broadway. Uh, on the southwest corner here, there's a couple of elementary schools K through eight uh, along this corridor. And it looks like an accordion as you drive it, expands from uh, two lanes in some areas down to a single lane in each direction. It's a, it's just a really interesting legacy corridor, uh, that has a lot of really distinct challenges along it. Uh, the per- uh, I guess today's purpose is to provide you an, an update on our design. Uh, which is approaching ninety percent. Um, talk about the public engagement process that we engaged in over the course of the project so far. Um, and then talk about some of the key safety and mobility enhancements that we've designed into the project as a result of that public engagement. Uh, we'd like to share our engineering team's design recommendations. Um, and then seek for direction on some critical feedback from recent engagement we've had with. Uh, individual community members uh, that have some, some feelings about the design outcomes on the project. Uh, so why this project matters, uh, it has distinct challenges in uh, traffic safety, high crash occurrence. In the five year context, um, speeding is prevalent along the corridor, uh, there's. Uh, a sidewalk or a mid block crossing that makes my eye twitch with no curb ramps. Which really bugs me. Um, and then of course, uh, two, two K through eight elementary schools that I referenced and access to our uh. Uh, Twin Lakes Park on the east side of the corridor. Uh, this project design hit at a pretty key moment uh, for the county. Uh, we were, of course, midstream on mobilizing a, a, a very large portfolio of capital projects. And uh, we were ramping up design when the uh, pandemic hit. So as we were ready to start engaging with the community, we had to get really creative about the ways in which we did so. Um, and working with Ayers, the design contractor, um, and in particular, uh, an engineer that I have a lot of respect for. Named Miley North, uh, she came up with some really interesting uh, public engagement strategies. Uh, to make sure that we were reaching community members where they were at a time when that was extraordinarily challenging. We had some, uh, I guess visually interesting uh. Uh, ways of drawing in the user experience uh, through the webpage. Uh, navigating as if you're in a three D room as, and engaging, engaging the user by clicking on. Context maps or pictures of the corridor in real time and, and populating pop up uh, dropdown uh, menus. In the additional information for this session, you'll see some screen captures from those early uh, public engagement. Tools that we made available to the, to the public. It really set the standard for. Digital resources and public engagement that we've leveraged since then on other projects. And it helped us get creative in the ways that we did outreach uh, for the community since the project, recognizing that. Digital isn't the only way that we can uh, engage or that we should engage with the community. And that because we were limited early in this project, we needed to do additional outreach and make sure that we were reaching people where they were. As we were able to uh, later in the project scope. Sorry.
I think it was just a sneeze.
Uh, later in the project, we, we received, or I'm sorry, uh, over the course of the public engagement portion of this project. We received a lot of community feedback that's also detailed in the support materials. Uh, we went deep uh, in the voluminous uh, uh, memo support that you all have available to you. On the kinds of feedback that we received, uh, both from residents along the project corridor, but also the communities served. That are both north and south, uh, who uh, deserve access to the schools that are uh, along the corridor. Also to the park adjacent to the corridor. And uh, I'm really proud of the. Uh, survey feedback that I noted on this slide that the residents felt heard, uh, thus from our last public event. Um, in that, uh, not, that doesn't always, that's not always the result of public uh, engagement. Uh, they, if residents don't get exactly what they want from the agency that's serving them, they may report that they don't feel heard. In this case, we had a really robust engagement process and reporting that residents felt as if they were being listened to. By our project team, by our contractor. Uh, the design highlights from the project, uh, it's a three lane section, that's one in each direction. Center medians uh, and center turn lanes uh, where possible. Um, new sidewalks and bike lanes are shared use paths uh, where possible. Uh, raised medians and pedestrian refuge islands, particularly in the school zones to enhance crossings. Believe right now, we all, we have only one mid block crossing along this corridor. Uh, elsewise re- uh, residents and pedestrians are crossing at intersections, uh, waiting for gaps in traffic. But no additional protection. Um, and then we're adding uh, RRFEs, that's because we're, we're very creative in the traffic engineering world. Rapid rectangular flashing beacons uh, to raise awareness from drivers of the president's. Presence of pedestrians attempting to cross the street. Uh, there are trade offs in any design effort, uh, so raised medians, uh, enhanced safety across the board. It's a, it's a fact that I can say with confidence, uh, but when you raise medians, you uh, limit mobility. Along a corridor, um, sidewalk widths uh, come, come with uh, meeting ADA accessibility. Uh, but as you uh, increase the width of sidewalks, you also increase the time and efforts that adjacent property owners have to put. Into maintaining and clearing snow from the sidewalks. Um, and then of course, right of way impacts, uh, our standard section for this type of roadway is a hundred and twenty feet. Uh, recognizing that we want to minimize the impact on people's lives and property. Uh, we are, we exercise the philosophy that we are flexible in that uh, and in that taking in. And operate on a case by case basis as we navigate any corridor on which we're building a project. So our, our corridor will remain flexible or has remained flexible through design. Uh, minimizing our takings uh, for both residents and businesses. While still maximizing the benefits of the public for sidewalks and compliance with ADA and uh. Be good for their safety along the corridor. Uh, so community concerns, particularly raised by the minority of residents uh, back in April when uh, issues. Excuse me, when issues uh, came, came up later in design. Is the placement of medians limiting access to individual driveways along the corridor, particularly being able to make left hand turns. Into and out of driveways. Uh, these residents felt as if our communication was lacking along the uh, full, the full timeline of the project. That they, they didn't feel as if they were engaged as robustly as they felt they should have been. Um, and that our website was substandard, which I will, I will grant the premise, uh, are what our websites are and remain substandard. It is a pro- it, it is a project that we're working on as we develop story maps and work closely with Nikki and her team. In the relaunch of the website, uh, we are aware of the deficiencies and leaning into how do we get more visually interesting. And more communicative and maintaining communication uh, in a more robust fashion over time. That is my word of the day, robust apparently. Uh, and then uh, how do we demonstrate maintenance over time is the third concern. Um, they, these residents rightfully pointed out that we don't have a good track record in public works of maintaining center medians. Um, in a way that we should uh, for weed control and uh, maintenance over time, I guess, of concrete. Uh, and having a good plan in place for what weed control looks like. And the outcome of this project is both good feedback and absolutely essential, not just for this corridor. But for the York Street projects, for uh, Federal Boulevard where we have maintenance responsibility of some of the medians that have been installed. And it's an effort that we're working with our District One team on uh, for contracting where it's necessary. And making sure that our maintenance efforts meets the needs of the community, so that we're demonstrating for residents that we're paying attention. And that they're worth the effort that we're, that, that we, that they are, were the efforts, I'm sorry, not framing that correctly. That they are worth the time and that we are investing the effort uh, in the community that they deserve. So next steps in current status of the project, so the project is at a ninety percent design. Uh, we are preparing to launch pending today's discussion. Um, the continuing right of way acquisition effort so that we can uh, invest in acquiring right of way in today's dollars. And make sure that this project is shovel ready when we do in the future, uh, secure funding mechanisms. To mobilize this project uh, into construction. Um, the pro- the department and the county as a whole will continue pursuing grant funding opportunities. And make sure that we're working closely with the board on slotting this project into the larger capital program. Which we will be returning next week to talk to you all about and where uh, West Seventieth Avenue falls into the. Uh, twenty nine projects and three hundred million dollars plus of uh, capital programming that we have pending. For serving residents of Adams County. So today's conversation, uh, and where I will, I will stop talking and invite questions. Um, will, I, I'd like to pivot around how this project reflects the. Uh, community's input and the county's goals for a complete street. Uh, for bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure, enhanced safety while preserving the mobility needs of a corridor. Um, we are recommending advancement of a, an engineering design here. Uh, but recognizing that we're not going to reach one hundred percent satisfaction with the outcomes of that design. Um, and we will uh, continue to efforts to improve our communications with all residents. Uh, recognizing that while not everyone will be satisfied, they deserve to understand the why behind our engineering design decisions. Um, but that our engineering designs are not the final word in the matter, that you all get to decide how our projects move forward. So uh, today I'd like to discuss if you are comfortable with how this project is advanced. And what questions you all have for, for us uh, at the department level and how, how you would like to see this project proceed.
Let's start off Steve and then I'll hop in.
I'll give some background on this. Uh, this, um, I mean, we, we do have documentation, this project was going to be done by twenty five, twenty six. So like, it's hard to, to, to say that we don't know when even construction will begin. It feels like that there are some decisions that are being made on timing on these projects, and I thought. This and other projects that we were, we agreed to a debt financing in order to not delay. And that we were going to continue, and that was something that we specifically talked about. And then so. Uh, even in conversations and documentation in the past to give to this community, it was brought up multiple. It was brought up multiple times when they said the rumor is out there that this project is dead or on hold because of funding issues. And the answer that I got back was, no, it's not, it's still cons- we're just going slower because of some of these design issues. Or having to go back and redo things or trying to do some of the outreach, so. I don't know what I can tell folks anymore after we've already told them, no, it's not gonna be dead and. You know, on our old CIP from January of two thousand twenty four, it shows twenty five, twenty six. So I'm having a hard time with that piece of, let's break it down, we got communication. We have scheduling and then we have the design. I felt comfortable, and I tried to explain this to folks in the community when they complained about this, that. We've been very consistent about accessibility and mobility. So curb gutter sidewalks are very important, especially for the fact that you're connecting commercial corridor of Pecos over to a school. A little bit to the east, we're also trying to connect major thoroughfares, we're trying to make them more safe. So I support that, I support the medians because I think it also helps with mobility. Does give some respite if somebody is crossing illegally, not at a cross theoretically, and I don't know if you have those respite spots. And then also, there was some inconsistent, it kind of goes back to communication, inconsistent communication about it. Our median's there for safety to slow down and sometimes we tell some folks yes, and then other times we tell folks no. So I think I really want to lean in on, uh if you move back to that one slide you just had, literally. When it comes to the access and mobility, I support that and I'm willing to say that access mobility and sidewalks. Even stand in front of a room full of really upset commu- community members and say that I still support sidewalks. And the ability of our humans on in the neighborhood to be able to use that corridor for ways that are more safe, meaning walking and those things. The can, the challenge I'm going to keep coming back to is communication, I think we need to continue to work on it, I appreciate that you said that we were trying some new ideas. And so I don't remember seeing those, so I'd like to see some of those at some point. But I do think that we do have a lot to address there, we could do that together, and I know we can. And then the maintenance, I'm so glad you brought that up because I do think, like, when you, we have medians that and right of way that has done. Really well and people see it, it's crisp, it's clean, it looks nice. And when we fall behind because of challenges of maintenance, whether it's street sweeping or anything else. People then use that as a bludgeon against new projects, and I was trying to push back on that. And then they would send pictures of some of the stuff on North Pecos and other medians, so if we could figure out. I'm all, I'm a hundred percent committed for us leaning in and figuring out right of way maintenance to support your your team. And I feel bad that if you felt like you have not been able to address that issue. Because you haven't been able to bring it to us for a discussion, because I think this board would be. Going to roll up our sleeves and address that issue, because you're right, we got federal, we got South Pecos, North Pecos, we've got York. Right of way maintenance is a big deal, so I appreciate you acknowledging that. But I do think we'd need to lean in on the communication, and I also don't think it's fair for us. To criticize engineers for not being comms people. And so I just want you to know, your focus on the engineering is important, I think that we need to take ownership of our communication piece. And make sure that you have the right people and tools there so we can do a better job collectively of interacting with our community, so thank you.
Kathy, thanks, can you go back to the slide that rendered, shows the rendering of like bike lanes and uh not know the more of the. Yeah, it's fun, thank you, okay, so. On the western end closest to Pecos, there is not going to be be a median, is that correct?
Yeah, we.
Because, and can you tell me why?
We ran into a a few issues on the western side. The the placement of driveways and uh side streets uh made it much more challenging. So there'd be more.
There are driveways that come out.
Lots of of center medians, we also ran into uh.
You can change the slides, whatever you want, you want to show me the.
And I I should have put a an aerial image into the uh presentation for this very, this very explanation, but I I missed that. We also ran into the situation in right of way negotiations. We would have. Should we, if we would have put a median into the space. We would have taken away parking that was essential to several of the businesses, so we would have ended up putting them out of business. Or ended up buying those businesses out. So that was an untenable situation in the right of way taking. So we decided to narrow the corridor uh as a result of that uh that un- untenable situation.
And what does that, so that parking remains their property, so is, are they going to en- enhance their parking to meet some new standards? The new level of what this street's gonna look like eventually, or or that's, I mean, it's private property, so is there any condition there? I mean, on it, you know, is it dirt or is it, is it actually, is it paved, is there a drive, is there, the parking for those businesses, is it dirt or is it paved?
It it would be paved, so inside of our cur- inside of our curb line or outside of our curb line, I guess. Okay, they have parking areas that we did not want to.
And they could, and there's no other, yeah, there's no way, they couldn't be, they can't be accessed from another angle for parking or anything.
Because of the placement of their buildings on their lots, et cetera.
Okay, okay, um regarding the bar- the bike lanes, I mean, what is the thought of? Because it's still gonna, is, so this predominantly, this is still gonna be one lane in each direction. Okay, so personal, I mean, I, my question always is, are those bike lanes, which are basically painted lines, really gonna be used? Or do we bend, what's the thought, what's the possibility of widening the sidewalk? So that it accommodates both pedestrians and people on wheeled vehicles. Because I think that's actually safer for the people on the wheeled vehicles than being in a painted, I mean, that's that's my personal feeling on that, so I don't know if that's, if that is. An option, I think that they would actually use more, I think it would be more user friendly to people on bikes and. Or whatever else they would be riding, or other, you know, if people who are road riding. So is that a possibility?
In in areas where possible, we have on the the left hand image uh an eight foot. Sidewalk, raised raised sidewalk, uh which is intended for uh wheels and and. Pedestrians, um and we did the on-street or or painted sep- paint separated uh bike wave. Where we did not have the ability to do the eight foot path.
So it's a combin- we have a combination going on?
Along the whole corridor, it was a a whole story of compromise along this, along this uh project corridor. Because of the limitations and and challenges of right of way acquisition, Janet, did you have?
I I was just gonna say, well, we have pretty specific rules when we have a multi-use path, which is that sidewalk where it's shared versus not. And so the width of that and how we can accommodate that, um we have pretty strict um accommodations that we have to make. And so that is why we had the flexibility with looking at the corridor and um using multiple um. Different um cross sections throughout the corridor. I think it's also really important that we receive feedback from our very first public um open house. For the desire for bike lanes or to accommodate bikes in this area. Especially within its uh vicinity to the parking rides and um transit availability. That a lot of people are really trying to look for locations where they can have housing. And not necessarily have to have a personal vehicle in order to get where they need to go. So I know that was really um in the spirit of addressing the needs that we heard from the public. By having either the multi-use paths or at least a bike lane to accommodate that needs of, or that feedback that we receive from the public.
Okay.
But to your, to your point about will people use it, I I I like to say that induced demand isn't always a bad thing. That if you build bike lanes, you are inducing demand for them. But also, uh another point you make of if you are, if you are just separating them by painted lines. You're, they're not as safe as uh median separated or uh uh raised uh median separated bike lane. Boulder is doing some pretty interesting things with, they call them half medians. They're they're basically half Jersey barriers that uh they put public art on and have uh thorough- thoroughfares. For uh water to flow underneath and uh they create a much safer condition for bicycles to operate along. They require a special maintenance plan to to operate, but there's some some exciting and interesting things happening. Even within our region that uh that we could explore as as exciting opportunities in the future as well.
That's great, and and my other um question which Steve brought up is is kind of the the timeline on this, because you mentioned that you were gonna begin. Public engagement, or community engagement um right before COVID, so I mean, that's twenty twenty, so. I I'm curious where, I I know you're coming next week, but I'm very curious where this falls on the list and why it would be maybe not. Why, it seems like maybe it's lost its, I my hunch, it feels like it's lost its place on the list um over time. Because we're we're halfway through twenty twenty five now, so I'd like to know. What we can do to try to get a date, because I mean it. Otherwise, we're gonna have to start re-engaging with a different set of community members because there's gonna be turnover in the neighborhood. And uh and also, and people will, and people frankly will have forgotten, you know, and then, and it it may seem all brand new to them. Or they'll remember, they'll remember things differently, so that's a whole nother set of challenges that uh that will will add time. To to seeing this become a reality, so I guess th- those are my concerns on the ti- on the timeline and I might uh hope that we can really emphasize this, boost it up the list.
Absolutely, and I I guess I I didn't speak to that when Commissioner Ariseo brought it up. So the COPs were to address, the the debt servicing was to address the four projects that we have under construction presently. So uh Pecos Street, uh Fifty Eighth Avenue, York Street Phase Two and. Sixty Second Avenue, uh those were the uh four projects specifically listed in the uh debt servicing. Portfolio alongside the uh projects that parks uh had in the in the package. The projects or the, I guess, the capital improvement program smoothing. That was also part of our our larger conversation is the effort that we're going to be engaging with you all next week on. Which is recognizing that our eyes got bigger than our stomach in the uh capital programming effort. Um and we need to make sure that we're living within our means. So, in an ideal world, uh when we started this project back in twenty twenty. If it followed a an un-resourced constrained timeline, we would be wrapping up uh right of way acquisition. And moving directly into construction. And because we are not in that world, uh we now need to recognize that uh we have capacity. Being limited by our annual revenues and we're going to be having that conversation with you all about what are our annual revenues. Here is our project loading and what's ready and uh then working with you all to actually pace out the projects. With in context with what uh uh grants we have in place. What particular findings we have uh uh sitting on our desk today. And uh then deciding what your priorities are for serving the community as a whole.
Okay, thank you.
And then just one additional thing, um speaking to the timeframe, we were delayed on this project. Due to some coordination with water and sewer sanitation districts. And there was a point where we really just had to go stop. We we need to go back and have some deeper conversation um with our project partners. And look at the conflicts um with our storm sewer and then some conflicts unfortunately that they even had amongst themselves. Along with our other dry utility buddies who actually weren't, um you know, as much of a problem on this one. I can't kick Excel in the shin on this one, but um so we did have to stop and really look at that. Compromise between the agencies and timing of um some of their plannings um to get out in front of us. That we did slow down this project um for a while, so I want to acknowledge that, um because I don't think we stated that to this point. But I will say, the great outcome for this, and I am pretty proud of this, is that we now have a quarterly water and sanitation district. For all of the um uh companies within Adams County that we meet with them. And are getting really good about coordinating, and I look at Alicia because she kind of heads a good portion of this. Looking at how they can do joint projects together, how they can pursue grants, how we're information sharing. How we're looking at um some of the way that we're looking at, we have this new thing called um Project Man where we're documenting like. Surface uh use utilities and it's really become a partnership. That I don't think would have existed if we didn't develop this problem here to try to find a solution. So I will say, if anything, we grow, is maybe the way I'll put it. We've grown from um an uncomfortable situation into being something stronger um in building relationships with our, with our partners, so.
So I'm gonna hop in here, then I have Steve and then Julie, so I want to go back to what I said in public hearing today. Is the delivery of the York Street project, and it was years in the making and challenges that we don't know until we get in the dirt. So I want to acknowledge that, but you delivered a beautiful project. I mean, the enhancements to residents and business that it was transformational. I mean, I can't say it was just like, oh yeah, they put down a ribbon of pavement and some sidewalks. And it really was transformational to those residents that live there and those businesses and just the community pride. Of people being so proud to be inviting, right, when you invite the community of an event that's a hundred and twenty years old. Thank you for the update, Bri- Brian, that you promised and delivered um the email, is that that community is really proud. And they're really grateful for what that project looks like. So when we look at this Seventieth Avenue and the challenges with our projects in unincorporated Adams in that area. So federal, Pecos, Fifty Eighth, Seventieth, um is that they're all, they're all built in. They're already built established neighborhoods and, you know, our standards have increased over time that. Setbacks matter, right of way matters, setbacks matter, and you know, even looking down at a hundred and thirty six and Sable. Where you have houses that are built right up to the roadway is gonna be a challenge. And I think that challenge, I want to say that, I don't know where the vacation ends, but Brighton picked up a portion of Sable Boulevard. And I don't know where on that corridor, but it's gonna be a challenge of what does future improvements look like there. It's, a number of things have been proposed, nothing that I'm aware of has been set in stone. So um I have a lot of empathy of what this looks like, I do want to hear about the challenges that you're um from residents. We can't get to a hundred percent satisfaction, that is just the world we live in. But what are the challenges that you're hearing from residents and or business, need to touch on the parking? Um before we get to that, I do want to roll some things up a little bit to the higher level is. You do have the COP, um if we can start talking, we have some frequent flyers and study session departments. And this one's not one of them, um so I think an update, periodic update of your projects would be great of. You know, what is out, what's happening, what are you hearing out there, so we can all work together. The other thing is the grants strategy and funding, you're gonna bring CIP back, which I really appreciate. So when we talk about the corridor, um I don't know if it's on this corridor per se. But what is coordination with RTD look like? So what would they require for a bus stop that it's ADA compliant? Because I feel like that falls on the jurisdiction depending what RTD's message of the day is, which usually has been. They are grandfathered in and the rest falls on the local jurisdiction. I think design and maintenance, I would just encourage um medians, medians have come a long way. So uh problematic when, while beautiful, you have those lush trees and vegetation. It does block the line of sight for travelers, um Brighton has experienced this. They are also an absolute nightmare to maintain. So Aurora experienced this, you know, if they took out the grass, they put in artificial turf. So a good example pleasing to the eye, hopefully it functions as it's as it's designed to, is the Hundred Twentieth Corridor. So if you go from like the railroad, I don't know my streets in that area, but the railroad, the light rail and heading west. They're like flat medians with rock design. I think that they serve its purpose and I think it would be low maintenance, if we're looking at median maintenance there.
I hate rock media.
I also I also hate.
I was gonna throw in a happy medium somewhere.
Uh happy medium would be great. Um I will just share from my staff experience in Aurora is that the level of risk to either a contractor employees to do median maintenance on vegetation is astronomical because you're on a heavily traveled corridor at fairly high speeds. Um and so, yes, it is an alternative, especially in our arid environment to do a rock median. So I'm also looking at the safety of the people that are gonna have to maintain it.
I know, I'm aware of all.
So that's just a challenge. So anyway, um.
I actually, can I get in line?
Yeah, so I have Steven and Julie. I think that I would like to hear the challenges you're hearing from um the businesses and or residents on the challenges on Seventieth Avenue that maybe we just need to be aware of. So when we're out about, we can thoughtfully respond to residents.
I I'd say on this corridor, we're not hearing a lot from businesses in the in the conversation. I think that residents uh uh the the vast majority of the of the residents we've heard from along the corridor are concerned about speeding uh truck traffic, um whatever other beams uh that you saw cropping up along the or from the public meetings.
I think um providing um multiple modalities of the sidewalks and then also the bike lanes. But to be more on the nose, um we do have um a very concerned citizen who is just flat out against having medians and they and they really just don't like the concept of um they can't make a left-hand turn into their property or a left turn out. And I will tell you that is a really cha- big challenge, is a huge moment in change management to go from a roadway um that is there is no access restriction to one with a restriction, that's super challenging. But I will say it's truly for safety. And when you look at, and I'm gonna go engineering dorky here, um when you look at an access point and where um you have a full movement, there's twenty-one points of conflict. That's twenty-one potentials of getting um into a a car accident um and not really in your control a hundred percent, it's the other people on the road. And that cuts in half when you um when you start looking at median use. Um it is really a hard thing to imagine when you've lived in a home long term to think that that change is gonna happen while you're there. I will tell you that the engineering team, although we are not the most eloquent explaining the why and why we we do appreciate the support from our communications folks back over there um of explaining why it really is safer for people, but then also that um we know it feels foreign, but it's not as bad as you perceive it's going to be. Um because a lot of people are like, well, now I'm gonna have to drive like two blocks. And the the way the movements and the breaks and the medians are are so that there is less than a minute delay within your normal chat and travel patterns. Um but to tell somebody who's lived that way for twenty years is it's heartbreaking to them. And um I want to extend the empathy to those people that this is a huge change. But at the same time, as much as they may not like that, I want to look out for that in there. Um and I care about that um equally as much as being respectful to um what they want to see. And that's a big challenge, a big rub.
And I'll also say that um if you think your minute delay sounds, or it's easy to say, oh, it's just a minute delay, but a minute when you're sitting in a traffic light feels like. So we'll leave it there though. I know we've got a a queue of other questions and feedback.
Even Julie.
I think uh I like the fact that you brought up the the empathy piece with folks because there are some concerns. Could you show the map to explain why some of the folks, because it's uh we did have some challenges early on explaining the purpose of the meetings. Sometimes we'd say it slows it down, the next time we'd say that's not the reason. And then the next time it was like safety and then we couldn't explain it and we put, I think eventually it would be good is the feedback we got is like when we have those studies, put them out on a project website, so then people can see it. Because eventually we did get that when I asked for it to share and I think that would be beneficial. Rather than have to chase down complaints, we can put those kind of examples. This is like bigger picture feedback on engagement and website stuff we can talk about later. The 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 one challenge is when you pull up the maps, I appreciate you doing that. And and I think it's fair for, because what's gonna happen is when folks in the community follow up after watching this video or whatever, they're gonna say, look, one thing that wasn't brought up is that you're only putting median in in front of these homes. And you didn't do it in front of a commercial and you didn't do it in front of the school. So all you're doing is taking away property in front of the homes, but not in front of the school and the commercial. And to them, the logic if the medians are good, do the medians all the way down. If the medians are not good, then don't do them, you know, like. And so that has been a challenge and it was hard for me to be able to tell someone that, yeah, if you go ahead and yeah, perfect. So if you look on the screen, you're gonna have the medians between the pan, correct? From the middle, all the way to the right to where the other school is, which is, is that Puro? Not right there?
Yes.
And have means elsewhere. And so the people on that corridor or homeowners are feeling like why would you take our land and not theirs? Why not just make it a straight shot and not do medians down the whole thing? If medians are important, why would you not put the medians in front of the school and the commercial? And we, I have not been able to answer that other than it's too costly to do it that way. And they said, well, then just make it a straight shot. Do you see what I'm saying? Like instead of going up and then over and then down and then over. That's been a challenge. That's one of the complaints. When somebody says that they were used to making left-hand turns, the challenge they have is if they one uh constituent mentioned what they have a trailer, now they're gonna have to go do a right turn. And if they wanted to go west, if they're on the south side, they now have to do either a U-turn somewhere on Seventieth or go through the neighborhood with the trailer. And they're like, how is that better than being able to do a left turn? And and we 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 never got back to that person. And then the other one is, I just, I I don't, I'm sorry, I I I will tell neighbors, having more pedestrian traffic is not something I think is negative. So I'm always willing to push back and say, we want people to be able to traverse. But I'm not worried about the sidewalks piece, to be perfectly frank. But I do think it's fair to acknowledge some of these other complaints where logically speaking, we haven't been able to give them like something that they would, they're never gonna be happy with that answer because it's not consistent.
And and I think I would point you, and now this is gonna be pretty technical um to the attached memo um that we submitted as part of the study session, because we really go into detail every section of why we did median or why we had to do some corridor flexibility. And I think that may be a helpful tool. Another thing I would mention is um the conflict of the explanation of the why. It I would say um engineers and lawyers are very similar in the sense that it depends on the lawyer that you're talking to and it depends on the engineer that you're talking to. Some engineers, Brian and I are both traffic engineers, but if you ask Brian a question first, um he might answer it one way and I might answer it in another way based off our experience level. So medians are used um in my mind first for safety. But for Brian, he may say there's also huge benefits with uh medians also um allowing people to have more awareness from having a narrower road that causes speed reduction. So I think in a lot of cases, it's not that anyone's right or wrong, it's just differing perspective or differing um prioritizing on what that inju- individual engineer's opinion is. There are things that are common. If you you told an engineer to name two or three things, they're probably gonna be in a different order, but very similar. And so I think that's one thing to to keep into um consideration um that we as engineers as a as a group are not uniform in the way that we emphasize one point or another. Um so I but that you are absolutely right. Um in messaging with the community, they see it as like a bait and switch or an inconsistent answer, which is why, again, we're growing and we are doing a lot better with the way that we're incorporating um the feedback that we're receiving. Because um like the handouts and things that are also located within the memo, you'll see they're a lot more on point, a lot more crystal clear of what's going on versus just having a conversation with an engineer at an open house. So I'm really proud of that and our collaboration with communications to create those. Because I think at the end, again, it's making us stronger as we're engaging with the public.
So the aerial image that uh further illustrates here, the frequency of driveways uh Colorado Glass and Mirror uh is specifically shows one of those businesses where if we had used the full section or or even the section that we're proposing with the median, uh we would have taken away uh their parking and made it impossible for them to receive uh uh or to continue doing business in the on the property. Um we do have a a small uh segment of median to allow for a pedestrian refuge island serving the uh uh Leadership Academy, uh so al- along this segment of corridor. But again, the uh placement of uh side streets and the frequency of uh driveways for businesses along the corridor uh is why the project team made the recommendation they did for not placing medians along the the western segments of this corridor.
It it is because of cost.
I just I just realized that we never circle back to my comments. On the previous slide, it's to- it's totally fine. Um so I was like, why is this look different? Um I just wanted to you can keep going. I can I can hold my comments to the end. It's fine. Because now we're like off topic. Now I'm off topic. It's fine. I should have been tracking it myself. You keep going.
No, what's your comments?
I just want us, when we're doing medians, to ensure that they are as green as possible, as often as possible. Because our ability to reduce the heat index in communities that do not have as much park and open space inclusion, particularly our older or industrial communities, this is our one opportunity to reduce the heat index and improve tree cover and improve air quality by adding greenery. Now, obviously, it's really challenging because you have water issues, durability, can you just get the native plants established and then they take over? What does maintenance look like? What does weed management look like? But um in communities who haven't taken every opportunity to insert shrubberies and trees, you end up with a higher heat index and overall uh for air quality. And so for as many areas as is possible um for community health and wellbeing, we need to be inserting as much valuable greenery as possible.
No, I agree.
That was my little comment that made more sense five minutes ago and I was got distracted by
It's difficult.
Julie and Steve.
It's difficult if if alright, it's difficult if it gets if the snow gets plowed over the
Absolutely.
So it's it's delicate balance for to be sure. And it's, you know, and
And a cost.
And and it costs and it ain't free.
We need to figure that out, like.
Community health outcomes also cost.
Yeah, absolutely.
I I agree, but the question is if we're having to delay because of costs, you know, I think that.
But thirty years of impact for not having heat index reduction.
To you, I'm saying that this is something we need to address because we have other medians that need to be addressed, federal North Pecos, South Pecos, York, all those medians, and we get complaints about it. And then when we want to put in something, they, some of the naysayers are justifying we throw that in.
Okay, Dion.
Yes, I I do have a a couple of comments, but I'm gonna start with um what it was talking about. We go on to a different topic because part of what I think will be really helpful for us is we're working through this and you have work session next week and we're gonna be talking about this more is to maybe ha- have more uh direction and guidance from you all when it comes to some of these sort of competing priorities or needs for things like the median program, uh because I think we're hearing a a lot of um perspective here about, you know, gravel and stone versus the the green cover and sort of wit and that comes into play. And for us, I think part of our task is to articulate as we're building out and making those choices that we understand the lens you all have, but also that we're able to address that when we land on the final design, you know, why we took that into account and maybe have landed with more greenery or less greenery, whatever that is. And maintenance is a big part of it, safety is a big part of it, but really understanding what those kind of key drivers are from your perspective as we're building that out. So I do think that that is important because even just listening to this, there's I would say not as much clarity as which one is more important. That's because every street is different and there's some long-term impacts in a lot of different ways uh that we're talking about. But I did want to kind of circle back to the the bigger conversation about community engagement, public engagement, how the team has been working on that. And we have a lot of projects coming up where this is continuing to be an effort that I have to really give kudos to Brian and team because they have been putting a lot of thought and and conversation into what that looks like. And you know, really kind of getting to the distinction between informing community and engaging community, which are different things, right? And appropriate at different times. Sometimes our strategy is really focused on just providing updates, providing information. That's not necessarily being informed by community. And so when we were talking about what engagement actually looks like in that change management and what that means, it's kind of where and when it happened. That is some work that is ongoing. I know the team has been putting a lot of thought into how they can improve that engagement. Janet mentioned some of the um, you know, standardizing of our communications and, you know, getting around the situation where we have different engineers who are maybe answering questions differently because of perspective. Part of that is a strategy to work together and developing some of those communication tools and kind of prepping ahead of time when we're anticipating what communities might be um sticking points for a community, how we're answering that. We are doing a lot of work around engaging with the comms team um and working on some of those strategies further upstream of for projects. You know, this is a good example of a project that there's been a lot of engagement, but to your point earlier, um what people were saying five years ago is not necessarily where people are at now or may remember now. And projects do change over time. And I I want to be fair to the team that there, every project we have, it has these multi-year outlay. There's going to be some things that happen along the way with every project that we know are going to make us have to adjust or adapt um project. Kind of teeing up the work that's happening next week. Um this project's smoothing effort that Brian's been referencing is I think really a great opportunity for us to take a look at that whole roadmap of the projects that we know we have been talking about, projects that we currently have funded for or maybe have less resources for and start thinking about the prioritization from our perspective as far as resourcing, as far as the timelines that we have from an engineering perspective and also from your perspective, when we think about where our community is at with various projects, because there are gonna be trade-offs. And there are gonna be some changes that we want to really think about how we're mapping that out. I think this is really the first time that we have sat together um and worked through that five-year plan and that five-year plan will change and adapt over time um every year. But I'm really looking forward to next week and being able to kind of go over all of that with you because this is this is a big uh big effort, big deal. And this is gonna be a lot of collaboration that I think we're very excited to do and it's gonna be continuing conversation. Um so I just want to just kind of point that out. That that is what we're looking at next week.
Thank you. Julie?
Yeah, so a couple of the things I wanted to to hash out and and kind of leaning on to what Dion was just talking about is the communication plan and strategy moving forward, um particularly for this project. So it sounds like just listening about the history, we got a little ahead of our skis maybe. And then now we're like trying to to play catch up. So one, obviously, yes, when when we communicate with with these um communities, obviously, timing is everything, right? We, when we tell them something, it becomes gospel. And this is what you have said and you must live up to your promises. And so being very clear about moving forward with projects and when we're talking about timelines, of course, we want to give them accurate information as much as possible in the state we know. Um but delays happened, but um that kind of leads on to what we haven't had, and I was just looking at the memo, so tell me if I'm wrong. But we haven't had a meeting with this group for this project, so this group being the community since twenty twenty-three. Is that correct? Has there been meetings with any of these folks since then?
I don't think like a large public meeting at that point. We have had communication like um like a I'm trying to think of the right word. Yeah, individual conversations, emails. I think at one point um we were drafting a newsletter. Um but a lot of that um kind of slowed down when we were having that coordination with the water and sand district until we were able to get to that ninety percent drawing queen um where we can kind of put a period on it and say, yes, this is the plan. Um and we want a direction on that as well.
The last last formal meeting was twenty twenty-three.
Okay.
Yeah, for, yeah.
But you've been having like one-off conversations. Okay, so one of the things that rate is just frustrating because twenty twenty-three was a long time ago. Yeah, so I mean, people, when they don't hear anything, again, this kind of came up in collab this morning, when people don't hear anything. Narratives go all over the place, right? People make up their own stories. So I I feel like it would be really nice to have somebody. And and maybe this is in partnership with comms department where like every project has a communications plan. And when we're going to be touching in with community and letting community know, I know that our website's, you know, a work in progress, but like. Our next meeting is this state or to reach out to us, go here. I mean, I mean, I think that it's it's nice to have. Regular updates for some of these projects, especially since they're going to be multi-year anyway, but having a specific communications plan that. You know, hmm maybe or may not even be owned by this team. I'm not quite sure who owns that work um, you know. Is is something that could be built into this process moving forward, so people don't feel like. Wow, I wonder what happened to that project. Oh, look at all this other work that's happening. You know, we got forgotten again, you know, things like that. I I think that. Again, without communication, people create their own stories about delays or whatever happened to this project or. Whatever the reasons were. Um so I think, yeah, that communications plan and and strategy is something that we probably want to revamp. And again, not saying this team even owns this, but um something that our organization needs to to build into that. Um I I don't even know what to say about the median. I mean, this is a huge. Uh I I understand why someone would be upset about leaving, like not being able to take a left turn. I mean, that would suck for my house, right? If I wouldn't be able to take a left turn out of my house. So I don't, I don't really know where to go with that. And you guys have a lot of data in here that I actually haven't been able to kind of review, but. I mean, again, having that communication, talking about the data, talking about the um crashes, you know, probably could be helpful. You guys are the experts here, and so I think that it's really important that you communicate um. Why it is you're doing what you do, um safety reasons being one of them. And so I think that that's, again, just. I'm not gonna touch the median because I don't, I don't know where that's going. Um and then uh uh last question that I had, um. Is artwork going to be incorporated in this project and has that been discussed with the community about?
For the for the mediums or where?
Well, I don't know. Don't we have a two percent? Yeah, don't we have a two per-? Two percent whatever art thing that we do?
So this project actually uh stands in the gap, I guess, of uh the public art policy. In that the design was started and public outreach completed before the. Uh public art policy or in parallel with the development of that policy. Uh so the county has decided that to allocate two percent uh for every capital project. Since we wrapped up our big formal communication with the with the community. So we will need to reengage with them about what they want the art to look like and how what. What that process will look like when when the project is. Is uh uh reprioritized in the larger larger uh project list for the capital program.
Okay, well, it sounds like re-engagement needs to happen anyway, um but if artwork is going to be incorporated. People love to hear good news, right? If there's artwork on the median, at least there's artwork on the median, right? I don't know, it's it's a win for for a community that that definitely needs it. So anyway, those were some of my thoughts and and questions. Um I'd love to hear that you guys are now meeting quarterly with the water sewer and the water district. I think that's fantastic just to get on the same page, moving forward. We talked a lot about building relationships. Um so that's good to hear that that kind of came out of this process, but um those are really only my concerns and thoughts right now.
Kathy? Uh thanks. Yeah, I had the same question about art, so I'm glad that you brought that up because I think that's important. Um. And it's probably in your memo, so I apologize for not being able to reference that right now on my phone very well. Uh are there alternatives to median that also provide safety? That also that also increase safety along the road there. I'm just curious, but like if if the community asked that, what they were told or what. And for my own self to know too, or is the media and and if the median is the best answer, then that's fine too. I just didn't know if there were alternatives to it.
Yeah, the so the medians were one of several alternatives that were explored with the community.
Okay.
Um and it it uh I guess is the safest of many options. And that prevents sideswipe accidents and head-on collisions where where medians are are utilized. Um it reduces conflict points like Janet was talking about earlier.
Yeah.
Um but this isn't an alternative that we're cramming down throats because we have an agenda.
No, no, no.
It was uh it it was presented alongside.
I want to say three of their alternatives.
Yeah, but there was like a two A, two B, so there were there were at least uh five alternatives. Uh that were presented in our second public meeting.
You have those.
To there in.
Yep, it's in the.
Yeah, what page are those on?
Fifty-three.
Fifty-three?
When it starts.
And it shows them without the meeting? Because I don't remember seeing anything without.
Notes on plans.
Because I specifically remember hearing people say they don't remember talking about, but I do see.
And they and maybe they know, but I I would say, I mean, I I understand, I mean, the cha- change is constant and change is hard and I uh but I think the oh, I think we also. It bears repeating that we are not going to ever see less traffic.
Right.
In these communities, so building a road or doing any enhancements or changes to a road. That does not take that into account, particularly in this safety realm, is irresponsible, in my opinion. So but and I I mean, where I live, I can access my neighborhood from two points. I live in a city. There's pretty much only one that I use because I don't. The stripes on the road in that particular turn lane don't make me feel protected, especially when people are tired at the end of the workday. So I always take the extra. Probably a minute or less to go another route. And I'm glad to have that alternative because it it's. I think it's safer and I always encourage my kids to drive that way too. And I and I know that doesn't, that's not going to make people instantly happy, but I. I think over time, I I think that we have to, we're doing the right thing by by prioritizing safety, I guess is what I'm trying to say. Thank you.
So a reaction that I have, that I'm having to this conversation is a couple of missing gaps. In our design process. Um one where is a bit off-topic and we may not solve, I certainly won't solve today. And that is the lack of a transportation advisory board. Um it's a a piece that we as an organization. Could consider uh putting into our process to begin addressing and help us. Focus on what are the missing links in communication, speaking with the voice of community. Um before we get to your desk um as a an extra measure of uh. Uh awareness to to raise the bar for public works in our in our capital program. We also have a missing element in our project design in that there's no final report. No formal ninety percent or hundred percent design report out. Uh where we say, hey, or or even thirty and sixty percent design report outs. Hey, board, here's where we're at with this project. What do you all think? Do you like the direction this is going? So finding ways to engage with you all at touchpoints, at milestones in our projects is probably. It it's a missing gap in our design process. So doing so in a way that is uh. Considerate of your time, uh but also recognizes that you have a role to play as our residents representatives. Uh is something that I want to put more thought into when I'm not sitting directly in front of you. Uh and then come back and have a discussion with you all about of where where does that make sense?
Who who would make up the board? But who would be on that a- advisory, transportation advisory board? Like me, like.
Not a mature thought, but I am a resident, it would be a resident advisory board, much like you all just did interviews for earlier this week.
Well, I'm just curious what you what you were what you were envisioning, but I think it's a great.
Just in other municipalities, yeah.
We do have um, you bring up some really, really good points and the board has a strategic planning session with Dion. This Friday. And I don't think you need to shoulder all of the. Gaps in design that you're recognizing. I think that what I'm seeing is that we have an engaged board. And we haven't had that in the past where the previous board members' body culture is just bottom line it for us. Bottom line, the budget, bottom line, you know, the high level, when's the ribbon cutting, when's the ground breaking? And none of the in-between those things were, did not come to the board. And there's pros and cons. And we're gonna sit with Dion of how do we strike that balance of being informed versus. I I I think that this board is willing to put in the time commitment and the understanding. And also to be a partner with our departments, that we're not in the higher echelons, that we do want to be boots on the ground. We do want to have. Contact knowledge because we do run into people all over the community. So um. I'm curious of what a transportation advisory board would look like. We have amazing, the last two to three. Interview rounds that we've done, the candidates are phenomenal. I mean, they've just, the residents. Are really, they really want to participate. They're not resume builders, they really want to do the work, they're in this work already, some fireboard. Members, um some others that are doing this work and they don't want to just check a box and be like, and I showed up and I had dinner and I'm leaving. Um so that's that's really interesting. I think that, you know, we're here all day Tuesday and we're including also Wednesdays. These days for the whole, you know, most of the year, whether it's detention center or special study session, we're gonna get into budget. Um I do want to hear them. I want to hear, I can't say this for the board, the periodic updates. Or when you're in a jam of, you know, I think part of our role is to also help you out of politically, we can. I I just want to partner and not just be so far removed from the work. Because that's not the reality when we go out and about, people want to know. And when we say like, oh, we're working on it or. I'll check on that for you, rather than answering them, um we use credibility in the organization. So those are my thoughts. Emma?
I completely agree with everything that Lynn just said. I think that I hope that as we have these conversations for the new era. That we are able to build frameworks of things that we are deciding, like, yes, there are aspirational goals, yes, there are cost balance. And if we did have a citizens advisory group, what frameworks would we give them? What would be the parameters that we are seeking them to balance? Just as when people grant or or deny an SCFD application, there's a framework for that. Or they grant or deny an open space grant, like there's a framework. And so I think we have a lot of work to do on building that framework out. And in the interim, we're having a lot of micro conversations, but I hear a lot of, I know you you're right that we don't have direction. But I'm hearing a lot of alignment with my peers on the balance of communicating constituent engagement. Balance needs, safety, safe routes in and out of neighborhoods. I have the same opinion, like which left turn do I want to take today or how do I take this without left turns? So this is, this is good. Like, we'll get there. And I think that we're having a lot of micro conversations as we're building the framework. Yeah.
I'm a, the the, one of the things that was brought up was the alternatives to medians. And I'm looking here on that hundred and eighty-four page packet that you gave us. Um the there was no alternative offered that don't include medians. So like that looked like you could still have sidewalks or medians. So by choice architecture. No medians was never really a viable choice for anyone to really discuss. When I look at these alternatives on page twenty-two to one eighty-four. It's either center median or center turn lane, but the only ones that say no center median. Are the ones where you say, well, we could just do nothing. And so there wasn't really a viable option here that I see. That was actually, eh which is consistent with what the folks in the neighborhood said is, we're okay with sidewalks and these other things, it's the median piece or. And then I also remembered at one point, you mentioned there might be some other flexible alternatives that are kind of like a hybrid between. We don't want it to be totally open, but you can have some sort of ways in which you can periodically allow a left turn, but maybe it's not a raised median. Uh but those are not in here. And so that that does create challenges when talking to folks. About credibility when we're saying, look, yeah, we discussed that as an alternative. And they're like, the only alternative that they. They never got the option to actually discuss anything.
And I apologize, I spoke out of turn there.
No, actually, um you're correct, Brian. I'm like, I don't want to say you're wrong, Commissioner, but if you look at page twenty-two. Um that's the breakdown of the roadway alternative. So we had alternative zero, which is the no belt, which let's face it, nobody in that world ever wants a no belt. Solution, right? So you're right, but that one does not include it. Then you had alternative one, which was a three-lane um section. With a median and a center turn lane. Then you had alternative two, which was a three-lane um with a median center turn lane. Um two A, which was a three-lane with a median's um turn lane. And then alternative three was a five-lane section. And the only way there was um medians was as pedestrian refuge. So it wasn't actually median along that course. It was just pedestrian refuge, which is different than when we're using actual sections of median. So that's just like a hump in the middle of the road. So we did actually deliver them.
Okay, so if somebody's concerned about medians and they have to choose between a five-lane road in front of their house or something else, there was no alternative. For a three-lane road without a median or a two-lane, that's what I'm saying. And so that's what has happened here is that you either. You you're gonna get stuck with medians or you get nothing, or you get a five-lane road. You know, I mean, like, there's no like middle ground where you can say, was there a middle ground without medians? And that's what the com- the neighbors were complaining. I think it's valid to acknowledge that. Because choice architecture is part of the challenge that we have when talking about, is there a real choice in some of these things? And so I agree with you, like five lane, yeah, we could have chose five lane, but people weren't gonna go. Like, who's gonna, who's gonna want that? You either go from nothing to five lane and anywhere in the middle, you're gonna be stuck with the median, which we. Do something in the middle. So and and the votes don't really show that there was a a lot of overwhelm, we got like two or three or four votes on some of these. Looks like so. I'm just trying to say that we need to work on our credibility. And then when we take stuff off of the website, and we've talked about that, and I think we can fix this. Is that when we had dates and other things on the website, and if we take them away, it looks like we're hiding something when I know we're not. It may have changed, but we've done that on a lot of these projects. And some of it's because the website went from being a PDF to then a website, then to a map. With just a notion saying email this person on these projects. But what we need to do is show the change over time transparently to show, yes, we own the fact that we're delaying it. Here's why. But if it looks like we're hiding stuff when we remove stuff with commitments that we made, like Julie brought up. They, the public relies on what we tell them. And so the average person who sees something in twenty twenty-two. That this project's going to be done in twenty-five, twenty-six, and then all of a sudden they hear it's not going to be done and we don't have that history to show it. It looks like we're hiding something. But in reality, we just need to own the decisions we make and be open and transparent so we don't lose credibility. So that's, and I don't think it's us putting this on the public works department alone. But we do need some guidelines on when we remove information because there, I mean, like it makes us look really bad and it we. Then we spend half of our time talking about credibility and trust than the design.
And perception becomes reality. So. Something that I that I hope that you all feel and experience from me is an earnest desire to. And and commitment to continuous improvement. Um our our website is coming along slower than I wish it were. Um and that is a message that I hear loud and clear uh that we cannot. Uh change the message over time without demonstrating that uh. Demonstrating what has changed and talking about the why behind it. Uh but transparency and uh telling our story to the public. Especially given the history of the public works department and in the way that it has served the residents of Adams County is always top of mind for me. We we have a a necessary extra measure of transparency to deliver to our residents. And uh and I I want you to know, Commissioner Adaricio and the full board, that when it comes to transparency. I I never want the outcome of our of our work to even smell like we are hiding the ball. From uh from our residents.
Well, and I think to your point of um discussing uh different choices and what we put out there as alternative. We could approach this in a completely different way. I mean, we're going through the EIS process with I two seventy. And one of the ways um they present the option in the developing their preferred alternative is they have. Like basically what they describe it as a box. So you're gonna have a box that has bike lanes and sidewalks. Bike lanes and sidewalks and then you're gonna have a box that has a median and then you're gonna have.
Components.
Yeah, the different components, so you're right, we could probably adjust the way instead of having. You know, in this case, fork and um, alternatives that are really produced by our um, consultant engineering team and our. In our engineers, we could really start presenting it. In the way of showing them the components and the boxes and then getting feedback of what is desired by the community. And then come up with the configuration, that is a more um, interactive way to um, come up with that. Um, but I, I think, you know, to, I take your point, you know, five lanes with no median, isn't that much greater than? I would definitely choose a road with a median, absolutely, I would choose that if it was laid in front of me. Um, so I think that's a way that we can um, take lessons from how. Um, that federal process is done and maybe incorporate it in our design processes moving forward too, so thank you for that comment.
It's been a great discussion, anything else from the board? We see you next at CIP budget time on seventieth.
Is it too late to talk about other options, that's the point.
So, speaking to gaps in medians, uh, so, short answer is no, it's not too late. Um, and gaps in medians is an option. It's not one that I could recommend because it objectively makes the corridor less safe. But it's an option that if you want us to explore and present, we could absolutely do so. Um, so it's one that I, you can feel the hesitancy as I, as I describe it. Um, because every time you create a mid block gap in a median. You're creating more conflict points and more opportunities for people to be, to, for cars to run into each other.
So is there, do you guys want to consider or do we wanna go, proceed on the current alternative, that's the question. As he said, it's not too late to talk about hybrid options or other options, but. Like, that's the question on the table right now, cause if not, we move on and move forward with the design that they're doing, but. Like, the neighbors, you know, have a question and if we wanna go with. Then we have to make that decision, just own the decision, stand up in front of neighbors and explain why, but I just want us to not have this, well, we could, you know.
Can you add a point of clarification?
Yes.
Do that, um, I think a, a question as we're considering that is. Hearing the feedback that you have from the community in this area and some of the groundwork that we've already kind of done, do you? Believe that there's kind of a critical mass of concern about the medians to sort of reopen this discussion? Cause there is some tension between the, the safety uh, impacts and the planning and feedback we've already gotten, but. I think it's, it's important to understand or we feel like that is the uh, kind of tipping point that we need to reopen that and consider that. Because I hear Brian, we definitely can, but that does mean. Kind of back to the drawing board on some of the work and engagement that we absolutely can do, but that is gonna be another factor and. We won't please everybody, but like, how, how important is this in sort of our ability to move forward? As we're thinking through that, cause we wanna, we wanna get it right, but I have to acknowledge that's gonna be some significant uh, adjustment with the project plan.
I personally don't know the answer to that question. Cause I haven't engaged with any of these individuals who live along this corridor, so I don't honestly know. For those who have been around longer, maybe you guys have that sense, but. I mean, honestly, maybe it's also a conversation we need to have with this community is, this project's already delayed. Obviously, we could continue the delay or we could go with the design that we have. Um, I don't, I don't know what's the best way of. Of getting to the bottom, I mean, we're investing a lot of money, we wanna make sure that it's right for the folks in this area, so. I, I, I don't know, if they're okay with the delay.
I think that's an interesting point you're making in that, we're not saying the options are, are bad. They just exist and we're not sure, and I, I certainly don't know what the, what the community's response was to those. And I think maybe rather than. It might be, maybe you've struck a happy medium, rather than us saying today, let's go back and start looking at new options, maybe we get some. Feedback, get our finger on the pulse. And see if that is, if, if that's what the community wants is to, is to look at other options, I, I don't know.
We could also explain to them why it's safer too, I mean, it goes, like, we can have that interaction and it's not kind of.
It is a lot safer.
But yeah, that's a way to explain it.
Communication and asking a few questions could, you know, either solidify the direction we're going or, or show us that we really have to, do we really have to go back?
And if they get a confirmation from us that we care about maintenance and like Emma said, you know, something, then it might be easier for them to swallow than not, but I mean. We could have, have a meeting with anybody, neighbor.
I hear you. Steve loves a meeting. Um.
What?
Steve loves a meeting, I'm gonna use a phrase that, that you've used before when we have, we're at decision points. Or discussion points is, is the juice worth the squeeze? So, ninety percent design is pretty substantial, that's the last stop before you get to a hundred percent design, so you usually have a thirty, sixty, ninety. Um, checkpoints, so I don't, I'm not in the design safety business for roadways. And doesn't limit access to people, absolutely, my, my folks that live in unincorporated Adams. Get onto Bromley Lane, it's only a right hand only, but you know, if I wanna go to the Perry Center. I drive through the neighborhood and I just go straight out, whenever, Tower Road, I think it's Tower Road, I know it is Tower Road. Um, something else, it's like three names after Tower Road, um, or. With progress comes these challenges and yes, it's right that that citizen that has a truck and a trailer. An RV, a work truck that you have to go around the whole neighborhood in order to park where you wanna park. Is what, when we get in these conversations then is, how are we gonna, what is the matrix and decision process? Is it ten neighbors, is it a hundred neighbors that's saying the same thing? Is it for the sake of opening it to have that discussion and a check and point with the neighborhood? I don't wanna unravel what has already been done and so I don't know how deep. How far do we go back that we don't have to redo getting back to ninety percent design? And what tweaks are really viable going from ninety percent design forward, so do we have a, a check and point, we take the temperature, we meet with the neighbors? Um, are we offering them an alternative or do you just wanna have a discussion? I'm looking at you, Steve.
I, I'm asking, I'm asking us just to own the whatever decision we make, cause it feels like we haven't been given that option until now. And so now, that's part of what's happening here, are we going to approve and say, yes, based on the feedback we got, we believe that the. Uh, the feedback we got as a safety is that much more and therefore please work with the complaining neighbors. To mitigate the negative impacts of the decision or do we go meet with the neighbors, hear them out, explain that to them? And then say if there's something that is discovered, at least you give them the, you know, since there's not like a deadline anymore. I mean, like at one point if we had a deadline, it might make a difference, difference though, redesign costs like you said. I, I care more about the process and, and, and that piece at this point where we are saying to the neighbors, we made the decision to. Support medians for this reason, based on what we were told, that's a valid thing to say, we just have to own it and not feel like, like. Like the process is so flawed that we still like, never got the option, we make the decision today to, to make the option. Based on that and then you own it, or we say, since, since there is no deadline on this or no start date, we could still go meet with the neighbors and just. Say this is what we're proceeding with today and if two or three folks that haven't met with neighbors wanna go do it, you can still do it, but. Or Brian may come back and say, look, here's, we're gonna go with the medians and here's some tweaks that we can make to make it easier for them. Or here's a commitment like Emma said, to make sure it's nice and clean and green and, or at least nice, that.
Greenish, Colo- Colorado green.
Because if part of the reason people don't like the. Because if part of the reason people don't like comedians is that they're gonna not be maintained, that could also be part of the mitigation of their concerns, so. I, I'm okay with whatever, I just want us to make the decision so we don't have to, you know, like. If it's still an option, it's option, if it's not.
Having this conversation every four months?
All they care about is that we, we improve our communication with our community and that we own decisions. And that we don't have this and this gray area all the time, and I think we're gonna work on that, on this and other projects.
So, help me out, Dion and or Brian, um, Alicia. What is, so ready for advancement when funding allows, so is that twenty twenty six budget that we're looking at? Is that COP that we're looking at, how close are we to? It's ready for advancement, is this twenty twenty six funding, CIP, or is, I, I think part of it already exists? Help me out with that.
It certainly exists for the remainder of um, right of way acquisition. And all of the design has been completed roughly um, for that, so that's all. Here for now, it's the transition to construction and that is the CIP discussion that we'll have next week. Where do you all feel we should be moving? And just as a reminder too, um, this is part of that effort that we indicated we'd be undertaking. To look at the impacts of tariff cost escalation, general year over year cost escalation, which has been significant since twenty twenty. But also to reevaluate. What are the current priorities given the last several years and the tremendous work that the team has undertaken? In the past, I guess I would say five to six years since we've really been able to escalate this work on. Um, road project need primarily in stormwater somewhat too. Um, so given that they've been able to accomplish so much, there now is really this conversation we need to undertake. On where do we spend those resources, so it could be a uh, near term. Budget, but that's really gonna be up to the conversation, but in the very least, the current. Resources cover all of this design and pre-work.
Okay, so let me ask a different question, how close are you to going out for bid for construction?
So, unfortunately, no, no straight answer to offer.
Okay.
The construction estimate for this project is about twenty million dollars. Uh, but that said, we could break it into two, we could break it into three uh, phases. Uh, to make it more bite sized, uh, so that we could implement chunks of the project differently. So we could mobilize uh, in, in different ways to. Uh, get it out there and, and begin to, to serve the school districts uh, quicker. Um, so, short answer is we're not close, but more nuanced answer is it depends. Um, and I apologize for not being able to offer that straight answer.
Appreciate that, I'm trying to gauge timing to go out to the neighborhood while still keeping this on the rails.
I feel like they could do that, right Brian, because we're still in right of way acquisition. So, there's time to speak to them and to get a firsthand understanding of what folks have said.
Kathy? Um, thanks, and so I appreciate, well, I appreciate this whole discussion, um, I. Take your comments about, yeah, uh, is the juice worth, worth the squeeze, always a valid question, concerns over. What ha- community engagement, engagement with the board at different touchpoints along this, I mean, we have been discussed and identified and I think we all. Understand those and share those, um. I'm okay, I will say, I'm okay supporting this design and going forward with this design. Because of the sa- because of, of prioritizing safety, it's gonna be a major improvement along the corridor. It's adding sidewalks, it's adding bike lanes, it's, it's doing a lot of good things and we have, and, and medians, we're discovering. We all know, we care about the medians and we wanna maintain those and that's, and that, and I, the, the area of. In my neighborhood, that's a, that's a sticking point with me, some of the choices that were made in order to, to uh, avoid. Regular maintenance or repetitive maintenance, um, I don't think enhance my neighborhood and I don't like them and I'll be, and I'm frank about that. I would, I said, I've said that for years and so, and, and you know, and as a resident, it kind of grates, it can grate on you, especially when you don't, when. I don't think there was engagement on that, but that's another story, um, so, but I think that community engagement. Going forward on this project, we know we need to really be sensitive to and. If we decide to move forward with this design, then yeah, let's talk about how, because this has been a ro- a robust conversation, but. At the end of it, if this, if we're gonna move forward, then let's talk about how we are gonna look at funding and the funding options so that it's, so that we are continuing. So when we talk with the neighbors, we can say, this is where we are and this is where we're going and not a palms up, you know. We, we don't know, because that is what we cannot deliver to this community anymore, you know.
I, I think. Yeah, I think we just proceed with the design as you guys say and then if we meet with the, we can still meet with the neighbors. And then you can listen to that and if there are tweaks in the last ten percent that make things better, you guys can do that, that's what you told me months ago. Is that, there's ways to do things that don't throw the baby out the bath water and you can make tweaks and so. I think it's important that neighbors hear us and then we also need to decide this whole right of way, like, are we green, are we just maintained, but.
Green, not like lot, like, like.
So maybe, maybe what we'd like to. Maybe if we prove the general design, we'd like to hear median options.
And, and other tweaks that might be more mitigating for concerns, that, I think then we can move forward, we're not. Going backward eighty or seventy percent, how is that? But we still kind of inoculate and fix the issue of communication engagement.
Yeah.
Definitely, so then we're not going.
I'm hearing, I'm hearing meet with the neighbors, we're not going backwards.
There may be tweaks in the last ten percent that could be made.
Potential improvements.
Based on us listening.
And then I think.
The last ten percent.
I would like to volley the median discussion to the people that are gonna design and maintain them.
Yeah, agreed.
I, I. And you heard our, you heard all the way from green to rock and all the things in between. Okay, we wanna shrubbery, it's nice and not too excessive. Anything else? Board?
Oh, thank you.
So, do we still need to clarify if arts being included or is that an outstanding item?
So that is absolutely not in question, it's, arts is always included.
It is included, okay, alright.
It just was not discussed with the community because we started talking to the community before it was formally adopted by the board.
Okay, great, sorry.
I also know like, you also have Twin Lakes, Cheryl Wood right there, you could do those monument signs by the way, that are. That will be one that you guys did on the, on York.
That's art.
That is, it is art, but also like, it's identity and these neighborhoods.
See, yes.
It is so awesome that this was always the goal, is to have those separate neighborhoods have a little bit of identity with their signage.
So I have to geek out and blow your guys' mind with this concept. Um, so, one of the things we can also do is do art crosswalks. So instead of just having, um.
They're unique to the neighborhood.
Typical, you know, white bars, you can do something that's totally neighborhood specific. That when we, and you know, typically before, when you have a project that goes on a shelf like this and not saying that's a discussion for next week. But, um, but we typically, when you dust that project off and you're about to go to construction and you're finishing that last ten percent. That's the fun conversations of what is representative of your community, whether we do um, monument signs or. Is, is it shrubbery in the median, maybe it's a really cool crosswalking, crosswalk design that's specific to that neighborhood. That's the stuff I love about being a traffic engineer.
And the crosswalk that everyone's gonna slip on like they do.
No, 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 and they're, they're. One, but it's, um, it's still hydroplastic, but you can do designs like, when, when I was in, in Inglewood. We used to um, sell them as a fundraiser for our parks where we would do like, um, we did forks and spoons. We did the phases of the moons next to like, um, uh, like a holistic crystal shop. I mean, you know, we did um, basically volunteer, sorry.
Cultural arts team does not recognize those sorts of installations as formerly part of their cultural arts installation, so we can do those as aside projects.
I like it.
Like it.
I love.
Wanted to add that caveat.
Brian always has, I can talk about this for two hours, easy, so.
Good, I feel like we got some really good feedback, thank you all for uh, your engagement. Um, I'm really, I'm excited about the next steps for engaging with this community, but also the ways in which we can improve on our other projects. Based on today's conversation as well.
Great, excellent, awesome. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You can turn on video here. All right, as uh as if you haven't heard from me long enough.
Who are you?
I guess I didn't formally introduce myself at the top of last. And so I'm Brian Staley, Public Works Director, sitting alongside Jenna Lundquist, our Deputy Director.
Dude, what was that last name?
And uh uh this is a good news story uh uh session where uh CDOT or Brother the State is giving us some thirty eight point four million dollars over the next five years. Um and we are here today to talk about the restrictions on those funds and uh then get into what your priorities are going to be for how to select projects and programming to utilize those funds within the within the parameters of the program. So the fuels impact reduction grant program um is intended. Is uh is intended by the state to address uh communities across the state that are uh that they've identified as producers of fuel in Colorado. Um so we have put together a framework in public works for based on the uh program premise take uh that we're recommending uh for your consideration. Uh but of course uh uh in response to Commissioner Horacio's uh email on the topic, we wanted to present project options that did not or that spans the full gamut of opportunity uh within the program and uh open the conversation per your you all's consideration um and direction on where and how to focus within the program.
That's why I'm here at the brainstorming session. That's my.
So there is a relationship between uh the sixty four percent number we uh within Adams County. Sixty four percent of uh fuels in the state of Colorado are produced here. Uh we received six point four million dollars of this program's funding per year, so that's that's no accident. Um the freight corridors uh or the program was established to address the fact that freight corridors face this accelerated deterioration from that fuel uh production. Um and uh the monies are intended to address uh safety, environmental impacts uh of fuel transport on our corridors. Noteworthy though, uh our freight routes or our freight corridors uh where we can spend these monies are not restricted to those routes where fuel transport occurs. So we can use these monies on all of our freight corridors uh within the county. Um so thirty eight point four million dollars over four years. Uh you heard from Janet two weeks ago in a public hearing uh authorizing the first uh six point four million dollars from twenty twenty four. She is in the process of processing uh our second six point four million dollars for twenty twenty five. Uh budget and finances helped us establish a uh fund within the road and bridge fund to house this those monies. You'll see a budget amendment coming up in the next cycle to uh process those revenues. Uh so all of the all of the background work is being handled. I just made note for the record that this is all uh being authorized by the state by Senate Bill twenty three dash two eighty. And the uh one big date that we need to keep in mind is that all or two big dates, I guess, that we need to keep in mind is that all funds in this program must be obligated by January first of twenty twenty nine and uh spent by December thirty first of twenty twenty nine. Uh there's absolutely no slippage on those dates, so uh we need to move fast and hard to to get these monies obligated and out the door. Um and we've got some ideas to to make sure that we do so. Um so I listed our our primary stakeholders in the process. Of course, Public Works will take the lead with some internal partners in budget and finance, uh community and economic development and uh with their uh participation, I guess, uh in and partnership with uh with our fuel producers within the county. Um but we will, of course, be looking for guidance for you and engagement regularly uh for uh project updates on how we're spending the money, uh making sure that you are all in lockstep with us uh over the next four years now uh as we process our way through this program. Um so where the funds can be used is uh for uh projects that address specifically freight safety, uh infrastructure durability on freight routing, uh emergency response again on freight corridors and environmental mitigation along those same corridors. Um and then we have uh uh I laid out a general structure of of the the bell curve, the arc of how we can obligate and use these funds within the within the timeline. Um and today's conversation I'd like to focus on is uh what outcomes matter most to you? Um which community should we be focused on as we consider uh expending these funds? How should we consider uh project readiness in the conversation, recognizing that because this is a grant fund, uh any projects that we undertake need to follow the EIS process for the state? Um and then what level of collaboration would you like to see with cities, recognizing that they need to that they have fuel productions housed within them, specifically Commerce City and Brighton? Um and we we don't want to leave them behind in the conversation. Um so we have uh options for prioritization. Uh staff, of course, has ideas uh and and options to present. We also, as I referenced in the previous conversation, uh have a three hundred million plus uh project list in our capital program. Uh many of those projects exist on freight opportunity corridors, uh so we could potentially uh obligate some of these monies uh to benefit freight corridors. One of our bridge projects that's uh happens to be our number one priority on the list um way out east um could potentially benefit. Um that we have opportunities to discuss with you around, do you want to have a joint workshop with staff uh to prioritize projects? Would you all like to sharpen pencils and uh work in isolation and then come back together with us to uh list your priorities? So many op- options to consider. Uh and in accompanying today's presentation, I went deep with you uh and have a table uh in that document, starting on page fourteen, I believe, uh where I really just cooked a whole bowl of spaghetti and threw it at the wall uh with opportunities and options uh that may fit within the program um constraints for the fuels impact enterprise.
And I think this is a good spot to interject. Um I also wanted to um point out um some specific collaboration um that we can um work with. Craig Hurst is um with CDOT headquarters and he's over there like freight group. Um he had um as we were uh getting our IGAs together um to get everything um so we could collect the money and get all of that process done. He has suggested some projects that he had gotten feedback from his statewide freight group that could be interesting um to uh the board as far as a project goes. Um in addition to Adams County getting um the funding uh established for them, the city of Aurora of Aurora also received a pocket of money um by themselves. Um and so uh and then, of course, CDOT has a pool of these funds as well. So there's opportunity to say if we all wanted to collaborate and come up with a fairly large project, um we could um identify that together and whether that's doing something with Aurora or doing something with CDOT and leverage the dollars that we have here in Adams County. Um so just to throw that out as an option. Um and then I've been having conversations with Craig, but then also Jenna Han of City with ideas because Commerce City is one of the most impacted municipalities um due to um fuel production. I wanted to kind of get their thoughts um as well. So um when there is interest, I can provide more details on those conversations as well. So I'll I'll hush and let you go.
Thank you so much. Um I'm looking through um the proposed programs here. I am a little concerned because as I read it from your packet, I'm just gonna read what y'all wrote so that I'm saying it correctly. The Fuel Impact Reduction Program provides Adams County with an unprecedented opportunity to do just that. Uh the establishment of Fuel Impact Enterprise, it's allocated thirty eight point four million. These funds are restricted to mitigating the impacts of commercial vehicle traffic. Um I'm really, for me, seeing a bunch of business as usual road and bridge improvements doesn't fulfill the goal of mitigating the impacts of commercial vehicle traffic. And for me, I'm curious, I would like to see the Health Department listed as a partner. You have all the municipalities, you have internal staff, but the Health Department wasn't listed. Um I don't see a lot of things on here that would be really helpful in truly mitigating as far as a residence experience um the impacts of freight. Um I see a lot of roadway improvements and literally speaking, because freight is heavy, it degrades roadway faster, so that is true. But when most residents think about impacts, they're thinking about air quality, noise, pollution. And I would like to see more effort to actually use the funds as intended for environmental mitigation. That would be my goal. And um I think at a minimum, we need to have the Health Department perspective to include the air quality in the conversation. That's where where I'm at. And I would also be particularly concerned, and I understand you have a clock and so you need a ready to go project. But when you talk about doing a project out east, when the heaviest impacted communities are at the western southwestern edge of Adams County, I would love to see the money go. Communities are the highest impact, but I understand the shovel ready. But I think the highest impacted community should be first in line for dollars, in my opinion. That's where I'm at.
Okay, thanks.
I think those are, yeah, I I appreciate that. I kind of thought the same thing you were talking about out east. I thought we're talking about mitigation, especially the roads that are used and abused by.
So there's a number of, well, may not be high impact. There's a number of freight and farming implements and large equipment and semis that do utilize that bridge. Um it was a washout. Is this the washout bridge or not? Or improvement bridge?
Uh this one is Calvin Byers uh where we have a critical bridge binding.
Bridge and then they assume which bridge. No, it's okay. I'm I mean, if you want to see it, but.
I'm pulling it up, nevermind.
Um so, yeah, and to your point, that that's 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 the that's the information we need to make sure we have.
Yes, so if you can continue. Yes, so if you can continue your presentation, I think, do you have a slide? There's engagement.
Absolutely. Um so. So uh mitigating risk is something that I I went deep on in considering the program. Uh just because of the time constraints. So how do we mobilize and get the dollars out the door? In into programs that are going to benefit the community. Um and Commissioner Pinter, your feedback is well received. When you're a hammer, the world is nails. And when you're a public works director, the world is transportation projects. Um so I uh uh feel like bringing. Health Department in as a critical stakeholder is is fantastic feedback and a. An excellent bit uh or an excellent next step for us as well. Um so this is just an an example expenditure timeline. Um I it uh it is absolutely meaningless, though, until we begin to uh. Uh identify projects and get them in the field. Um so discussion and direction that we're seeking today is narrowing in the values and focus areas. That you all would like to see uh guiding this discussion, like environmental impacts over transportation. Um then focusing our our uh uh investment considerations. Does it shore up capital programming? Is it focused on uh air quality mitigation? Um technology on the roadways, et cetera. And then uh narrowing that list of projects or throwing that list of projects away. And coming up with entirely new lists uh that we're going to uh uh meet the needs and values of the of the board.
Thanks. So um. The idea of, you know, environmental mitigation can take a variety of forms. Uh in in this case, and so improving roadways or intersections. And lengths of road that are used by freight or to mo- move the fuel, whatever, you know, um. That whatever the the impacts are to the roads that degrade them is important because when trucks can keep moving, we have, there's actually less. You know, and they're not stalled and delayed or have breakdowns because they hit a piece of road that's, you know, it. That a pothole or something or just in disrepair. So I think so that's something important. It it. So it's quality of life, it also does improve the air quality if if the traffic can keep flowing. So I take your, so I I I think that's. Something I need to keep in mind when we're thinking about these projects um that. Does that, does that make sense? Is that, you know, so I think that's that's another lens for us to to look through. Um and also just maintaining these roads, these are for safety because they do take the brunt. They they get pretty beat up. And so just maintaining them so that that traffic flows and uh and that people are driving on safe roads is also, I think. Part of what this grant is intended for.
I was just gonna add one last little detail. This is a little chicken little, so brace yourselves. Um but to a certain level, um because these are state funds that are as an enterprise. There is some timeliness um into the strategy of spending these funds. We all saw with um the state cutting M M O F funds um from the budget last year. If we don't show, I think, um an impact in the using of the funding right away. Um we could be coming at risk in some of those later years that'd be cut from the budget again. Nothing is out there that says that that would happen, but it's it's one of those things that wakes me up at two o'clock in the morning. That flags in my mind of let's be quick in spending these initial funds. So that we can um so we can display or um sh- just, yeah, so we can display that we're using them. That they're getting put to good use, so we are at risk of them being taken away. Um I and I think that's one of the challenges. I know Brian's like, we can start from square one and do anything. Sometimes coming up with a scope and developing something from scratch just means it's gonna take a little bit longer. So I would advise, as you guys are thinking of projects, to think on maybe both ends of the spectrum. Something that's um low-hitting fruit that may be quickly or quicker to implement. And maybe a longer-term type project that we can get towards the end of the fundings as well. Um so that um we have a balance in the way that we're showing the spend and the fund. So that we're projecting the longevity of the of the source of the funding. Just knowing, I think, this year, the state's probably gonna enter some additional budgeting challenges.
Yeah, agreed.
Agreed. You guys survived. Chicken little, sky's not falling so much.
And I know you have the next step slide um after this, but one of the things I think. I I am worried about getting the money out, and so timeliness, I think, is is gonna be a huge factor here. But then also, safety, I think, is gonna be huge. So I don't know if maybe if there's a way that we could look at. Trying to figure out, and I'm, I didn't look to see, is there a column about how to? Like, how are some of these projects that are gonna be proposed um impact that safety piece of things? You know, what, I I like the idea of trying to partner to make these dollars go further. Um because that's just, you know, money we're not gonna get again. So it's nice to to see how far they go. Um but yeah, really looking leaning in into those safety aspects because that's. That that has just a significant impact on our community as well, moving these hazardous materials around. Um and making sure that, you know, the truckers are safe, the community is safe. Like, we want all of these areas to thrive together. So that's gonna be an important piece for me. So I'm actually okay if you propose some projects, especially some joint projects, I think could be really great to see. And then, I don't know, do we hash it out after that or?
I'd like to see, I think, a hybrid because you're. You're engaged with other Public Works and Transportation. You're all in the, you know, you're all in discussions together at the local level. And what does collaboration look like, you know, as we go through one hundred and twentieth and some other um programming that we're. We're partners with with, whether it's Commerce City or Brighton. Um I do like the safety component of that. I think that if you can take a stab at it and give us some ideas rather than. My only thought is is similar to opioid where they had a short-term and a long-term investment outlooks. That they start laying the groundwork with maybe the seed funding or something bigger. And I do like the hazmat. I think that was listed on here, the routes, the routing, and it was a low priority. I just skimmed over to that column. Um I think if it can be used for this, uh to go a little bit further into. Um s- safety is really the, it's a school district thing, also Commerce City. They'll say it's Adams County. Um the ownership of roadways in Commerce City is confusing to residents and to the jurisdictions. Um is really school zone safety, if we had to narrow it down. Um a lot of these schools are also impacted by oil and gas near them. Um but what would that look like if we, I don't know if we can go that specific um as far as programming is concerned. And then I wanna say it's two-two-four, so Highway two is you go into Commerce City. Um I know Commerce City is doing the Vasquez interchange, but as you take the exit. To go like back to the fleet, I don't know what exit that is, past the A-frame, um there is no. There's no real drainage. I don't know how I say that. Um it looks like in, it looks very incomplete. Do you know what I'm talking about? Okay, um the other one, well, I don't wanna help him. I think that this is an improvement to. It's also Commerce City wants to take it on if there's a P three opportunity. Um if you drive through the Suncor campus in that area. There is no.
Really bad.
Drainage. There's no curb gutter sidewalk, so the rain, the pollutants, the liquids, they go everywhere. They and there's a waterway right there, so I don't know what improvements look like. I don't know if that should be a burden of just public. Um I think that Suncor has a play in that as well. I don't know if that's us, Commerce City, all of us together. Um but that seems like an apparent problem to me that it rains and the puddles are everywhere and the rain goes everywhere. Um rather than to a dedicated system somewhere along that like steep.
I'm trying to catch up. I'm looking through the document. So like, give me just a second. I'm. Looking at that, so I didn't have my hand up, I'm sorry.
But I can also make a comment while you're kicking. I think that what Julie said about the hazmat routes, it's exactly that kind of analysis. For impacted community and safety for community.
Yeah, one one of the things um that I think would be really cool is doing um like an alternatives um route analysis. So that um hazmat vehicles or trucking in general has to stay to that route versus just making up their own routing system. That's a planning project we identified within there. Um I also thought it might be really helpful. Um we don't have a lot of um. Uh cameras currently in the quarter to monitor, um like having uh like a. Like a trafficking ma- uh management center where we can really monitor, like, when are we seeing congestions? Congestion at different streetlights and things like that, where we could change timing on the fly. And this is a Josh Ascender, our traffic engineer's dream project. Brian's probably like, I want this too. Um it's every traffic engineer's dream to have a really strong traffic management center. Where you can have like real-time switching to relieve traffic and help, again, kind of the air quality pieces of it. So I think there's some really interesting pieces there. I will tell you, um a project that got identified by both Commerce City. And Craig Hurst was Bridge Street. They're basically like, Bridge Street is a hot mess. And um they, you know, it needs to be, it's a huge um freight movement corridor. Um that needs upgrades and improvements, and they had identified, both of them had identified. Um that that may be a corridor that we could collaborate on. Um and then one of the environmental aspects and then um.
I'm working through, so did Com- Commerce City identified Bridge Street?
Yeah, as well as um uh Brighton, Commerce City, and um C dot.
Is that item seventeen on this list, the East Eighty-Eighth Avenue Bridge Share or?
Um I think.
No. Not Bridge Street, got it.
So um I don't know how many of you have had the opportunity to visit um the E four seventy traffic camera. Um man center.
I have.
Um it's quite impressive what they are able to pull off. And I would highly recommend, if that's something that makes it, as you're going through this process, to the top of the list. That we take a visit of a highly functional um camera observation system that they use for exactly that. As well as they have funds, because it's E four seventy, for emergency dispatch. Um roadside assistance, which I don't think the county will have, but um they have incredible documentation. That helps them. It is for fair collection, but it also helps them from a safety and traffic flow management perspective. Yeah, yeah, it's.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Okay, in looking at the uh. I I I don't just, I mean, I think that there's a lot here and I appreciate that.
There's a lot.
That that you identify that, but um in 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 and I'm looking at the cost. And I don't see the, I mean, high, medium, low, what was the ranges again?
I'm just trying to give a very rough approximation of how much it might cost by.
Like, because like, does high, medium, low indicate that all of these are things that can be paid for with this fund?
Oh, no. So I think at this point, we were cut, like Brian was saying, we're throwing spaghetti at the wall. We wanted to come in and get an idea of um what your inter- where your interests lies. And where you think we can um uh make the biggest difference. And then we can go back and then put um formalized costs to it. So like, for example. Um a hazard mitigation study, which is one of the items on there. I mean, we can spitball that that could be between two hundred to three hundred thousand dollars. The construction projects are much more complex to deliver estimates. But we weren't sure if you guys wanted to be like straight-up transportation roadway project. Or if you wanted to take a different approach and have an emphasis more on hazardous mitigation. And we didn't wanna push that on you either. We wanted to see what your vision was of the use of the funds. And then come um then come back once we receive direction with a more formalized detailed list.
Yeah, yeah, I guess like the challenge is is that we're kind of in the same thing that we talked about on the last. That it's hard to understand when a choice is given to us, whether there's a viable choice or a non-viable choice. And in a time where we're having to potentially talk about delaying promises that have already been made. And then now to talk about adding new promises that may not be covered by this source of money. Then makes me wonder like, well, is it a real choice? And I do appreciate the long-term stuff that we could, this would be like something that we would probably decide more on a C I P or a strategic level. Some of these things that we cannot afford with this money. But like, I thought we would be presented with maybe like, here's some options of what you could do with the money and be covered by the money. And then that's why I thought maybe low, medium, high might say, look, all the things in low could be covered with money and still have leftovers. Medium would cover, would take everything, and high might take up the whole thing, plus we'd have to go get other funding to supplement. I don't know, but it's hard for me to feel like I really have a menu of choices here without understanding the impact of any one choice, especially in relation to. And but I appreciate the idea of saying potentials, but I, it it doesn't give like. I and again, I appreciate that. I also know that there were folks like the motor carriers and and C dot and Hurst and those guys. Who presented a few of these, and now we've got seventy projects, but have we discussed specifically the ones that they were proposing?
Yeah, they're on the list.
I I but I don't know which ones they are. Are they highlighted specifically to say these are the ones that? That those folks from the Freight Advisory Council specifically asked for?
I I didn't highlight them, and I guess I I interpreted your email to suggest that you didn't wanna see the menu. Because you felt as if we would inappropriately skew you or give you a false choice.
I see what you're saying, like. So, right, so more choices is what we asked for and more flexibility, not. And I do think that, yes, there's that point where like, okay, you get what you ask for, and then it's drink from the fire hose. What I'm trying to figure out is, is how are we supposed to differentiate now? Um it's feasible and not feasible and um.
Can I ask a clarifying question, Steve?
Sure.
So one of the things I saw in there was that at uh page thirty-two, the Adams County Board of County Commissioners plays a central leadership role. And the successful implementation of the Fuel Impact Reduction Program with a robust list of projects. And then what I heard you say just a few minutes ago, um I think, Steve, you were reading, was that you wanted to get some more framework from us. So you could bring back a more curated list. And so I was trying to provide feedback that would help you with that framework development. So that because sixty-four-ish items or whatever it is is too many. And if it is, uh I think you said it's thirty-four million total, but like six million per year, do I hear that correct? Yeah, so that's not a lot when you come to road and bridge. And so I feel like I would be curious, what is the timeframe of the turnaround from you guys to bring back that more curated list? Would that help, Steve, with your question, to hear when, how we can provide feedback and when they bring back a curated list?
No, I I do think it helps a little bit, but I do appreciate the fact that when I said, hey, let's let's make sure we have the choices. A little bit of an overcorrection to give it, you know what I mean, like, well, here's here's a million choices, just tell us what you want, Adam, you know, but I get it. Like, we're still trying to figure out how to, you know, work together on those types of things. Um I guess my question, I I I'm not sure I would, to narrow it down, I'm not sure I agree that. We want to forego or remove capacity and other road improvements, especially if those deal with congestion and safety. So I would be a little nervous about just carplage saying nothing dealing with roads that might be perceived as. Uh old business way of doing business. I guess, I don't know, I guess I'm kind of a loss. I I it's hard to go through a full book for each one of these study sessions and. And then try to, but it's more information than less, and I guess that's that's shame on us for not, you know, being more clear. And I will take that as something we gotta own, but um I'm trying to understand when we look through this, like. How much of the information in this, you know, fifty, forty-some page thing do we really think is the most important part to parse out? And I'm looking at it and I'm trying to figure out, I don't know, I mean, I I don't even know how to narrow it down right now. I apologize. But at least we're in it together.
Okay, Kathy, then Julie.
Oh, so are we along the lines of the opioid settlement money?
Oh, so are we along the lines of the opioid settlement money? Can we, we don't have to spend certain amount each year. We can hold some back and save for future projects. So we, we can budget it, we can budget the, the total through, in the way that we see fit, right?
Yeah, realistically short of like a study this year, we're probably not gonna be able to have impactful implementation of a project till twenty twenty-six. Right now, just as late as it is this year, and when we get the four, the six point four that's coming in for twenty twenty-five. Probably won't be for till October-ish timeframe.
Okay, so one of the questions that I, sorry, I asked from one of the slides is, or you know, what? Or was in the one of your memos? It's about us providing guiding values for these programs. So I don't know, it's. Would it be helpful, do we feel like as a group that for us to maybe be given or brainstorm a menu? And then we delete, then we choose those, I mean, what, what are our priorities? I think one thing you've heard is traffic flow. So projects that can help with flow um. Because that's good, because that does help air quality when things flow. It's also a safety issue. So I'm not really sure. I think we're not giving this, them the guidance and the feedback they need to come back with a more curated list unless we come up with, so I'm not, and I don't know if we're gonna do that. If we're gonna arrive at that today.
Dion. Yeah, I, can you go back to slide earlier, we were kind of talking about how we might want to approach this prioritization process? It's one of the first couple slides.
And, and how much did Commerce City get again?
Their Commerce City didn't get direct findings, but Aurora did.
So I, to Kathy's question, I'm trying to remember which slide it was, um I think, you know, we can offer today.
Is that what you're looking for?
I think that's the one, or maybe it was something that, that um. Here we go, structuring prioritization, sort of what this looks like. If you all want to take this offline and have more conversation together. About what the priorities, big priority areas would be and come back to the team with more of that kind of top. Three or five uh areas that you wanna make sure we're including. And then be able to give that feedback so that they can provide a curated list. I think that would be fine. And I think that, that's, that's a way of, of doing this, cause right now.
Think that's a good move forward, because we're, we're not gonna achieve today.
Well, and I will say, you guys have already kind of given us um some guardrails with identifying, you wanted to have um an environmental impact. You wanted to have a safety component and you wanna keep mobility, you wanna keep things moving. And capacity is not a restraining factor. Those are four really good pieces and a focus on hazmat. You guys have given us actually quite a bit of feedback that we can go back and start looking at some things. Obviously, if you wanna talk more and kind of maybe do a one, two, three or something like that to tell us like an emphasis on it. That's incredibly helpful, but even the information you guys have given us today has been helpful.
Oh, okay, well, good, I, I'm glad to hear that, that's great.
Harley says what I'm hearing.
All of these things you guys identified as some, some of those factors already. Um part of what I need to know is like, look, if you. If you choose option two, that takes up the whole thing, or you could choose option seven, eight, nine. You know, that's the kind of, and I understand it's hard to come up with estimates and obviously anything we estimate will be lower than the actual cost. But like, if we try to do it in a way that. We're not having to reach into our pockets or say if it's worth it, this one might matter to reach into. I don't know that we have a lot of extra money when we're being told that we, again, I'm gonna be real sensitive about creating more. Promises when we got first finished the first ones. And that's gonna be extremely important for me. But if there's something that could, this could either help with those promises. Or it can be also, I, I think it would be good to know when you come back with options, say, is this a standalone, it could be covered within the program? Or could it also overlap with some existing C I P promises that we, you know, maybe don't need to delay on or don't need to push off or. So then we, helps us fulfill promises. Or, hey, here's something that might be a big, you know, big awesome audacious goal, but it might be worth it to create something new, but. I just, I'm, I'm gonna be sensitive about uh leapfrogging, you know, stuff that we're, like, stuff we talked about this morning.
Well, I mean, I think that's why Brian, not to speak for you, Brian, but um why he mentioned that number one um bridge, the Calhoun Buyers. I know it's southeast and you, the perception is it may not have as much freight movement. But if that bridge doesn't get repaired and it's weight limited, the round trip that um e- everybody. Use of that bridge, uh which is a pre- predominantly farm to market, but also oil and gas industry. Is going to be super negatively impacted and let's face it, driving extended miles to detour around a bridge. Is also has a component of air quality. And so, you know, um and then I think to go to Commissioner Odoricio's point. Um taking off that number one project stuff of our C I P list means now we could probably fund something that. Pop up something that was on a medium list versus um something that was uh supposed to be funded with our current five-year C I P. So.
Impact is in these neighborhoods near these distribution centers. So it is a little lot to put something way out. Somewhere where the actual impact from this use is mostly out there.
Yeah.
In these urban areas. So there was a couple bridges that were closer that they were talking about, like ninety-six or so. I saw like those kind of things, like if that also keeps some stuff out of like these. Big gas trucks from going into neighborhoods, that's the kind of stuff I wanna know.
Yeah, same, yeah, yeah, I, I agree, that's the type of stuff I'd like to know too.
I, I feel like we've got some, some good framework to apply to begin to narrow down a list. We'll uh, we'll start putting some projects into buckets for consideration. Um I'm thinking uh for reaction uh that we'll put this in front of you in memo format. And uh to Commissioner Pinter's uh inquiry on timeline. Um maybe get on the docket to get back with you within a month. Uh so then you've got a couple of weeks with the material and then we're back in front of you for discussion uh two weeks after that. Uh so that we can keep the ball moving on uh uh identifying the project list first and then mobilizing these projects as quickly as possible.
I really appreciate that. I, and I can, I can talk offline with you. I don't. The funding is restricted to a timeframe is what I'm hearing. I think at a glance, I can. Know by memory recall which projects have applied or are active for other funding um. Including federal funding dollars. And I think that would weigh in on my impact of. If we can do even regional AdCog transportation dollars, subregional, regional. Um could also enhance potentially, if this, yeah, up it. If this project goes forward and we can support it with something else, or we already have one in the, the pipeline for AdCog transportation. And this can support that project. Um I do hear uh high impact. I, I do need a plan for the Calhoun Bridge. And I know the board, your intention is not to discredit Eastern Adams County, but there is freight. Um it is ag, it is farm implements, it is semi trucks that move. Whether it is supporting um crops out there, supporting animals, feed, whatnot. Um we also have, I don't know as far as, I'm not good with spatial. You know, uh that's not my strength of that, but you know, as the Rocky Mountain Rail Park comes online. We've already heard from A D M that they're gonna have a large truck presence um in the area. So not all of their product is coming in, might come in as freight, might, or might come in rail, might leave as freight. So, or as a transport. So just some things to think about as Eastern Adams County continues to grow. Um and that rail park has a big impact. Lumber, that's not the end place for lumber. Alpine lumber's out there, they're gonna have to send semis out there to get the lumber, to bring it to urban, so. Um it's changing drastically out there um as we look at the expand uh. As we pri- I make Casp a higher priority, what does that do for that region? So those are my.
Buyers that you're referring to, number seven?
Calhoun? Um, I don't have it on my list.
Oh, and I made a big error.
Which is the one that Lynn's referring to?
It, it's a Calhoun Buyers.
For my recollection, cause we did a road trip of that.
And how much is that gonna cost, expect?
A eleven million dollar bridge project.
So we can still do this and other stuff?
And I made an error, I said Bridge Street because I actually had something on Bridge Street to do with today. I actually meant Brighton Road. So please forgive me.
Brighton Road.
Bridge Street I do, but Brighton Road makes a lot more.
Yes, thank you.
One I was speaking about, please forgive me.
What's your big? Thank you so much.
This is awesome.
It's gonna be cool.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, John Stoll, I'm the Long Range Planning Manager for Adams County Community Development. Today, I'm here to talk to you about the remainder we had left over from Module Two, which is the Agricultural District Standards. You'll remember our people from K K C were here earlier this summer, at the beginning of June, and they kind of went over that. But in the interest of time, we kind of left this part out, so we're just gonna touch base with you on this and answer any questions you might have. Here's our timeline, you can see we're here at the end of Module Two, which is our Commercial and Industrial Standards. Previously, we discussed Module One, which Residential District and Subdivision Design Standards. We've actually kicked off Module Three, the Environmental Sustainability Standards, so we're starting to work on those with our other consultant, our subconsultant, Tanyan Environmental. And as soon as we get this finished off, we'll move on to full bore for Module Three. Oh, sorry, Jenny.
I will just say, since these are kind of key slides, you can't really tell where we are. There's about kind of transition slides, ten slides in there, so I think John's happy to take questions throughout. It's not that long, it's easy for us to go back.
Yeah, I'm, this is gonna be short. Alright, so yeah, today's focus is on the Agricultural District Components. So this will be brief. This is a kind of a look at our, our different varying neighborhood types. And this scale you're seeing here is kind of the density of the lots on the site. Now, let me back up for one second, does everyone remember or felt comfortable with neighborhood types prior to me going forward? It's kind of a way of thinking about how subdivisions are designed. So you're kind of like, one of the most common ones you may have seen in other opportunities would be like a cluster subdivision, where you're in a more agricultural district and you've got all of your lots clustered down in one corner, we'll get to that in a second. But it's more about lot layout, amenity types that are included within these, and how you would develop the subdivision, and what you would see during your review of that process, if that makes sense. Yeah, here we go, so this is kind of a description of all those. You've got your conventional neighborhood type, which does not apply in agricultural districts, or conventional does, sorry, I apologize. Convention does apply in agricultural district class. Then you have your cluster neighborhood type, which is more of a preservation of open space, so consolidation of the lots, and I have a better slide of this later on. And then the compact neighborhood type does not apply in agricultural districts. This would be something you'd see generally more urbanized areas. Yes, please.
I realize this is a little bit small to see on the screen. So they kind of look similar, right, probably from where you're sitting. But if you zoomed in more, what you really see in a conventional, right, is very typical large lot. You don't have a lot of common space. The idea of going to the cluster, right, is that you actually preserve some of those tracts of publicly available land within the subdivision. And compact is applicable in the residential, we had that discussion before, but as John just mentioned, we don't see that in the agricultural zone districts, you can kind of cross that one out for purposes of today's conversation. Clarifies the sort of difference, is the land for private use or is it more for?
Okay, so pulling us back to our many types, we introduced these during Module One. And these are the, just the publicly enjoyable areas of a subdivision, so natural areas, greenways, plazas, things like that, that you would see in those types of designs. As far as agricultural zones, we only would have cluster neighborhoods and the regular conventional ones. And you could also create natural areas, greenways, and small-scale agriculture for your amenity types that would come out later on. Alright, so here's a better example of a cluster neighborhood versus a conventional neighborhood. You can see it's the same size lot, you're using the same lots, but you're going to consolidate them in one area, which preserves a big chunk of natural area open space in one corner, so you don't have as much of that, what could be publicly or conserved land on individual privately owned lots. So I'm gonna kind of explain how we would calculate amenity spaces. So you want to do a subdivision of forty acres in an A1 zone, and you select the cluster neighborhood type. A1 requires that you set aside sixty percent of your land as amenity space if you choose the cluster type. So forty acres times sixty percent equals twenty-four acres of amenity space required. Since we like natural areas, we've given it a kind of a multiplier, we're calling it an amenity factor. So rather than just being a one-for-one, we actually make natural areas worth more, so they're worth one point five. As opposed to just one, so that acre, so normally, if you didn't have that amenity factor, it would be twenty-four acres. But since you do have that, and it were, for every one acre of natural area is actually worth one point five acres of amenity space, you were only required to have sixteen acres of natural area, and you need to satisfy your overall amenity space requirement, because it's a more desirable option, as opposed to something like a, I don't know, like a plaza, I think we have set as like a point eight, so it's not worth as much, so you'd actually have to create more spaces to do that. Does that make sense to everyone? So I'm happy to back up and explain that one, I've kind of gone over it a couple of times.
No, it makes sense.
So this is just kind of a summary of our key zone district changes. As you're gonna see in all of these, in all three zone districts, A1, A2, and A3, that we're introducing the cluster neighborhood type. Maintain the one unit per two point five acres for cluster and conventional right now. And as I mentioned earlier, you'd have a sixty percent open space or amenity type requirement for cluster development within this district.
That's what it is now, right?
That's, that's what the acre, the density is, yes.
I mean, like in the current program, like what can, what kind of neighborhoods can you put into current A1?
We just have this, the actual subdivisions, do we even have?
Yeah, there are new neighborhood types in our current land use code. So that's, that's probably the biggest shift, not just to ag, but in general, in laying out neighborhoods within the proposed updates to the plan, is saying, look, there's ways to do more responsible land use planning, clustering certain things, so that's new, but the conventional represents what we have today.
Okay, let me make sure I understand. Right now, if I have a, when you go back to the prior one, A1 parcel, I can currently put on, I must have twenty-four acres of amenity currently.
You, the current code?
Yeah.
No.
No, this is, this is proposed for a cluster neighborhood, this is a new type of neighborhood.
Okay, right, what can I, what kind of neighborhood can I build on A1 now?
You can build a standard subdivision.
Conventional, which we're calling conventional.
Sixteen.
Two point five acres.
One per?
One unit for two.
One unit for two, so thank you.
Two point five per unit.
Yeah.
One unit per two point five.
One unit per, say it again?
One unit per two point five acres.
Okay.
Sixteen parcels, right, that's what you're saying. And then this would allow how many total portions?
As it's currently constructed, it would be the same density, but that's one of the questions we're gonna ask you all for feedback.
The bonus.
Yes.
That's the question.
Yes.
Thank you.
We would like to incentivize it. So A2, pretty much the same, introducing the cluster neighborhood type, you have the one unit per ten acres. And as it's set up right now, it's for cluster and conventional. And this one would require seventy-five percent based or amenity type as part of the cluster neighborhood development. That would be up in that sixty that you saw in the previous one. And then A3, again, introduction of the cluster neighborhood type, one unit for thirty-five acres, still density neutral, eighty-five percent open space, part of development for cluster neighborhood type. So as we're seeking our, your feedback from, from you all, should we move forward with the addition of a cluster neighborhood type in the agricultural zones? And if so, would you support incentivizing their development with a slight density increase?
I'm not sure, can you go, I'm not, the first slide you showed is that, we used it, it was a forty acre parcel. You said they had to have twenty-four acres, but we're incentivizing that to say, no, you really only have to have sixteen. Are you talking about that one point five acre amenity incentive for all of these neighborhoods?
It would be for all the, that amenity type would apply to all the cluster developments.
But it's in each type of zone.
Yeah, for natural areas, natural areas of the one point five.
Right.
So when you say natural areas, are you meaning leave the land in its current state?
In general, that's, that's kind of the idea, that you would create, you would preserve existing habitat and natural, like plant growth in the area untouched.
So it's not curated, or kept as a park or?
I mean, I think more philosophically, it probably could be, let's say it was very raw land now, and we wanted to incentivize some habitat restoration, right, or adding some enhancements for wildlife habitat. Oh, I don't, that would be consistent with the purpose.
I'm okay with that, the thing that jumps out for me for natural area, cause my parents live in a conventional two point five acre per unit, is that I don't know if it's governed by the covenants, or if it's a county code that they have to keep their mo, their weeds mowed or down, it has, they can only have so much heights to it. So when you look at natural space, where does that intersect with our either code compliance? I don't know if it's a code issue, or if it's a covenant issue, if it's covenant-driven or code-driven. If that makes sense, so that, that would be my only concern of making that one to one and a half exchange. Does that make sense?
It does, okay, it's something that we would need to make sure in the performance standards that go with it, that that's very clear.
Yeah, we can, we can include a line on that.
It's also for fire mitigation as well, that you keep those manicured protection zones, yeah.
True, I guess that's the question, is, is, because you're aren't a neighborhood now. And you potentially have weeds, right, and those are areas if they're not.
And if you cluster it, you're gonna have this natural opens, more open space area that's me, I, amenity to me means that it's being managed and looked after. Where natural space might just be virgin land that is in its natural state.
That's why I'm confused by the answer we just got, there's still maybe performance.
Yes, that's what they said.
On even natural areas, and so.
But they will, they would look into it.
Yeah, sorry, yeah, alright, I gotta.
Those who know more on best management practices, because it is important that the code's very clear about that, so that code compliance knows how there's to respond.
Exactly, so I look at like Cock Creek, and those folks along the fence of Cock Creek, who are next to the golf course, always have some sort of situation with home, golf course, and then the natural area in between. At one point, is there a requirement that it has to be natural, or does it have to be cut down? Do you see where I'm saying, so I appreciate that question. I also think like, is this different, the natural area different than the open space requirements for subdivisions? You see, you know what I mean, like you guys have a requirement for, if I come in with subdivision of a forty acre parcel, what's, and I come in, and sixty percent has to be undeveloped, undeveloped? But is that the same, are we conflating natural spaces in this context with open space in other contexts?
Well, our consultants are calling open space amenity space in the code.
That's what I'm confused.
We can definitely clear that up and make sure it's always amenity space.
Amenity is a park, amenity is a pond, and amenity is a lot of things.
Playground.
Yes, that's what I said, but a natural space becomes a dog poop park if you're not careful. Yes, it becomes a place where it's natural, so I don't have to clean up after my dog.
That's right, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
You know, it, that, it's funny, you never know where people's minds are gonna go when they hear those things. I have a question, like, so how close to current municipalities or any dense areas of, of incorporated Adams, would these areas be? Because as we continue to grow, I mean, are we going to end up having carve-outs of, I mean, not that we don't want natural space, but, you know, nineteen houses clustered on a forty acre lot, forty acre parcel, excuse me. I don't know, I was wondering how this, your growth impacts the future across our more densely populated areas of the county.
So Chase was originally going to be here presenting today, which is why I'm taking curious notes. I think that we are getting to a point where we're bringing so many ideas, and they're good ones, right? I mean, for, for conversation purposes around tweaks to the standards, that we're feeling like it might be a good time to organize more of a workshop setting with you all, where we can have some additional graphics and voting and things like that. Cause I realize these are hard questions to answer in isolation without kind of talking about the larger context. You go in that direction, I think anyway, right, of wanting to maybe.
We would.
Yeah, we just, we knew that this piece did not get covered in the previous presentation with the consultants, so we wanted to make sure we got it to you. But it feels premature to be able to give the direction at this time, because we need to have that bigger conversation. I think that's, that's reasonable.
I'm up for a bigger conversation, if that's the direction the board wants to take. I read this as you're in the A1 zone for residential, is that you're providing an option enhancing that in addition to the conventional one to two point five acres, one unit to two point five acres, that you're also offering this cluster option for folks that come, developers that come forward. And the cluster option is beneficial, because you still get the benefit of the natural space, but you get the efficiency of the infrastructure. And, you know, the cluster developments are much more efficient than the sprawl that you see now, which is great. And there will be, continue to be people that want to live on two point five acres, and that can, that will still be open to them, or this other option of the cluster. And I think in the cluster, I would even be open, because we do get requests from already built subdivisions, that they want like a walking path, that's just something in the administrative planning process, permitting process, that it includes something to that effect. Doesn't have to be like a walking path around the whole forty acres, but at least some, you know, whether it's a mile or two mile path through the natural space, or somewhere near the cluster would, that's something that people want for their dogs, their kids can go bike riding, whatever the case may be, so, yeah, Steve.
I love how she put that, because it's also, it is an amenity when it's that. I'm worried that it does become dog poop like field if you're not careful, if it's too natural and nobody has to, so I'm a little, but I do have a question for Lynn, this is kind of a Splendid Valley kind of thing. What if you did that, one point two five type of incentive for natural spaces, and then a one point five incentive for active ag, like the agriburbia piece, or something along those lines, where it's actually being used for cultivation?
Different multipliers for different entities.
Been like eight to ten years since people really got excited about the concept of agriburbia, we were supposed to even have it out here?
Let's be right there.
Right, and I've been bragging about that for ten years, and people look at me like I'm nuts, and it's like, I guess my question for you experts is, is that still a valid, cool thing? Or was it an idea that went and came and got, went away, or is it something like, because we can incentivize and say, you get more incentive if it's an active ag, maybe it's like community garden, that's really cool and big, or it's that, those kind of things. That would be kind of really cool, different than just natural.
So that was looked at, actually in that parcel right directly west of us. And they were gonna use active ag, the agriburbia, to take advantage of those, I don't, not gonna use the right terminology, like those flood zoning areas that they could develop, but could still be.
Other people's rope.
Utilized, yeah.
Those conversations are still happening, it's just.
Their city of Brighton.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, what do you guys think of the idea of like separating the difference between natural space and an active ag?
I think it's a great topic for a workshop, yes.
It's gonna be blunt, I don't care what we call it, I want it to be consistent. And so if we're calling it open space in one section of Adams County Government's administration, then it should be open space. And if it's amenity space, and that's how we use, and then we have that defined in code, then it should be called amenity space. And, you know, I just want us to be consistent, because how we get into trouble is when we have a really neat idea, and then we put it into code, but we use different language, and then that doesn't tie back to our existing frameworks for land designation, and this is how we get into trouble. So the clustered neighborhood map, I think is the best one for housing development in an agricultural zone, I get it. But when we're talking about what we're calling it, I honestly don't care, as long as we're consistent. And I will use whatever language we use, that is consistent, I can be taught. But if it's open space, we're using open space, if it's amenity space, to Mr. Hudson's point, then we're using amenity space, and that's more flexible. But let's be consistent, because otherwise it gets weird, because open spaces, capital O, capital S, and if we use that, we better meet it.
There's a difference between open space, active, inactive, ag, not ag, parks.
The definitions are well tried, and so we just need to be accurate.
I mean, it is one of the weaker spots in our existing code, is there are a lot of undefined terms, so we.
And to add more is not pretty.
Unless we're consistent, then.
One's the question. So we do have ag as one of your amenity types in here, we have it as a one-for-one, but you want it to bump it up like one, two, five?
I, the reason I say is like, one-to-one, I mean, it's ag already. Like, if we're trying to encourage, first, there's two parts here. Number one is, do we want to allow clustering? As Lynn said, I think that's, there's a lot of reasons to allow that. First of all, there is efficiency, like you, like Lynn said, but also there's an environmental piece to that, where you're not having to cut into the ground in this huge spread-out sprawled grid pattern for everyone to get those amenities. You might be able to do one, one main trunk of sewage and water and all those. So as far as I'm concerned, if the decision points are clustered, my answer is, yes, I support that being added to the ag. That's, that's me personally. Separating that from the next question is, is do we want to incentivize with allowing more density for those who want to play ball with clustering? And my question to the board, which is, I guess I, to respond to your question, I ask a question, which is, I would be okay with incentivizing for density for clustering. My question is, is do we want to separate or include active ag versus natural? Knowing that our friend over here is going to tell us whatever terms we find need to be consistent, but I think we want to differentiate between active ag, that's where you're actually running agriculture, versus a natural space that's not necessarily. I don't know.
So to repeat back what I think you are all saying, cause I think you're on the same page one in here, is yes, you want to move forward with the cluster type. Yes, you would like to incentivize some density, slight density. And the question really to still be answered is what the right multiplier is for different clearly defined amenities.
And for me, I would think ag is harder to do, so you're going to incentivize, well, active ag versus just a natural field. But I'm wrong, tell me if I'm wrong, like, that would make sense to me, that would be more valuable, because you have to have somebody out there doing something.
Is that implementable? I mean, like, I guess my question is, is like, just because you define it and you incentivize it, like, is that, can someone actually?
It's agriburbia.
I know, but can you like actually make money and do that, and like actually be a productive?
I think that's the whole point of why I think it would be, require more incentives, because I don't think small-scale farming on that level would be self-sustaining without some sort of, well, you'd almost have to have somebody maintain it, like a property manager or something, wouldn't you guys agree? Like, I mean, you might be able to get a firm.
Certainly talk to.
So that's why I say incentivize it more.
Who proposed, get some, yeah.
It'd be a good thing to workshop. I, I'm brainstorming that, do we write it in as development standard, or, you know, is that an amenity, I mean, it could be looked at, so I just, I think workshop, taking notes and workshopping that would kind of be. And how big, I mean, like, you know, how big of a, one acre is a lot? People can't water their flowers in pots, I'm just saying. How are you gonna, no, it's a lot, so if you're looking at cluster, what, where is that located? In per se, is it community, is it raised gardens, is it, like, what does that look like? Those, that would be, and is it implementable, like Julie had stated, so it's something for.
Fishing in the farms where now the only way you can do the ag is through city water, which made that.
Cause those water rights got converted, long story.
Workshop.
Yeah, we can workshop it.
I know that it was really helpful when we were doing the comprehensive plan update, to have that kind of a setting where it was a little more pre-form.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The only other one we had was this kind of odd one, but would you support allowing an additional home on A3 lot that's over forty acres? Apparently, prior to two thousand and two, two homes were permitted on lots that exceeded forty acres.
Allow additional A3 lot over forty acres. So the standard right now is two homes?
No.
No.
It used to be two.
Oh, that is.
Wow, why did that change? I think we, I think we end up with a reasonable amount of people coming in and saying, my mom is retiring, we'd like to move her in, can we build my mom a house? Like, or, yeah, we, we bought an ADU, my brother would like to move in, like, I, I've seen enough of these come before us, I'm actually fine with, I just don't receive two homes on forty acres as a density to be avoided. I, I think once you get above that, it starts to be problematic, you have a neighborhood or a compound. But some people enjoy compound living. But I think that two homes permitted on lots over forty acres makes sense, or like, I have one, and I rent one out as Airbnb. Like, I think there's, I see this as practical, but I don't, and in part because of the number of applications we've been receiving just during my tenure on the Adams County Commission, Steve.
I have a question, why did we choose forty instead of thirty-five? And I asked that question because Senate Bill seventy. Thirty-five, is it, right, from nineteen seventy-three or thirty-five, allows you to do a subdivision of thirty-five acres or more. And so I guess if we're trying to, there's some arguments out there that by allowing another house on thirty-five or forty acres or more, allows more density. There's another argument to say then it locks up that land forever and prevents density, which is why some of our mountain friends at CCAT really don't like the forty-eight, thirty-five acre Senate Bill thirty.
We only picked the number because that was the previous one, the two thousand, the previous, prior to two thousand.
Makes sense, historical, practically speaking, if the goal is to allow more flexibility, and if somebody wanted to carve out thirty-five acres, because they're allowed to through Senate Bill thirty-five, right? Then they do we. Then they do we, if we're gonna do it for forty, why not do it for thirty-five? Is there some sort of rationale that we would come up with?
Forty, lots, township, all that stuff plays into how there's plotted, how there's.
That's true, cause it's forty is a six hundred, uh, six hundred and forty acres is a section, and it breaks out to forty very easily.
Definitely, it's origins.
You know, like, this references Nicole Kipman and Tom Cruise and aren't away.
Don't remember.
Okay, so the current standard is one home or two homes per forty acres.
Now, by our, by our ADU standards, you could put an ADU, you couldn't do another, like, similarly sized house.
But now, if we did this, you could have both a house and an ADU for each of those houses, I'd be okay with that too.
So you're asking, the ask is two homes per forty acres and an A three? Or three? Two.
Yeah, I don't think it would necessarily allow two ADUs, would still allow one ADU.
One per.
You'd stop one lot.
What about duplexes? We allow an ADU for each unit of a duplex.
So if somebody had forty acres and they said, we'd like to put on a duplex, right, we would count that. I don't think it'd be two duplexes, and so I mean.
What I'm saying is if we have a unit.
How about we workshop it? Workshop it. We'll take it to the workshop.
I'm good with two homes per forty. Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with that. Cause we have seen, you're right, I'm just shocked. Like, I want my kids to live here.
Yeah, my daughter's gonna be a nurse. Like, I feel like we have these families come in and the need is there.
Yeah, subdivisions in particular to give them the ability to have multiple family. So, yeah.
Thank you all very much.
Hey, thank you.
So you'll work on it.
Thank you as well.
You're unmuted.
Oh, I know, I, I got her, no, uh, there's all kinds of. I mean.
Okay. I think we're ready, yes.
Um, before we get going, if it's useful for you, you don't have to take it, we have what we were just referring to as the incentive bingo card. Um, that has all of the ones that we're coming to you with, just, we're only doing a few today, happy to give that to you again as a point of reference, but. Um, we'll hold on to it unless you would like it later. So our main purpose in, in having all of these conversations with you really is to give you a broad incentive framework. That really does meet your strategic county priorities. Um, so some of the presentation today is really just informational only, or giving updates on what existing programs might be doing. Um, and then there is one piece where we are seeking direction that is specific to doing a manufacturing assistance grant program. So we'll clearly call that out when we get to that portion. Just touching back, um, as point of reference for various presentations that link up to the content of today. You'll notice that there was, for example, the CDBG annual action plan is referenced in there. We don't normally think about that in the context of economic incentives, but, um, some of what we're talking about today. Was presented to you through that lens, and so we wanted you to have these dates, um, here for reference. If there's anything you want to go back and look at, or certainly we're, we're glad to provide you with. Um, additionally, we have now scheduled, since this was put together. Um, county revitalization authority conversations will be coming back to you in, in two ways. Um, one is a status report, kind of a comprehensive policy analysis memo in August. And then the conversation with you in September of saying, this is the area we'd like to prioritize to move that forward. Um, we've also secured a date to talk with you about data centers in September. So, um, which will also have a policy memo coming in August. So those dates are really there for your reference going forward. And then this slide is a duplication of what we had in our previous round one incentive policy conversation. Except that, um, at Commissioner Pinter's, um, suggestion. We added some language in the incentive philosophy statement to specifically call out promoting community health and wellbeing.
Thank you.
All right, so the bingo card, we have the, the lighter gray ones here, the business personal property tax rebate. Enterprise zone in areas of specific local concern, those were the topics we talked about in round one, so you see where they fit in. And then today, we're really talking very much about incentives we use in the retention and expansion of our existing business community. Um, we are gonna talk about Colorado Enterprise Fund, which sometimes is an attraction or a startup tool as well, so we put that in both squares. All right, the first piece is, is probably the most robust in terms of needing to have some, some board direction. And, and answer your questions, um, around this. But one of the pieces that we heard through the stakeholder engagement process of the Economic Development Strategic Plan. Was this need to have some enhanced support for our entrepreneurs and our small businesses and startups. So this is addressing that need. Um, you may also recall that advanced manufacturing is one of our target industries, so it also connects with that. Most of you, I think, know probably Manufacturers Edge, Glen Plageons, we've had a lot of conversations around what they do and how that might work. But, um, you're not in the same position that, um, some other, you know, cities and, and EDCs are. As far as being able to say, yes, we're gonna work directly with you, we would need to go through a competitive process. So, um, what we would look to do, this was an area, and we'll talk about it in some more detail in a moment. That you all would want to go into is we would issue a notice of funding availability. Uh, you'll recall, we've had a lot of conversations about our statutory limitations of being able to provide direct assistance to a private business. So we would look to find it outside nonprofit that we would actually work to su- support them. And then they would really make the selections of which businesses were they were working with. Um, so we'd take that NOFA structure. We're not looking at this in terms of any additional budget request. Every year, we have the incentives that we pay out from those incentive agreements, right? A business performs at a certain level, they get to claim a certain part of their, their rebate. We always budget as if everybody performed at maximum level and we paid everything out. That never is how it actually happens, so there's always some residual funding at the end of the year of unrealized rebate funds. And that's what we would be looking at here as the funding source to do this, so it's not, not a request for new funding. Um, and then the specific parameters of how a grant like this would work, we can always tailor on an annual basis, given that. What do we have to work with without making any new budget requests? And what needs do we see really, um, emerging? So, and if I don't cover everything, I'm asked Bill to jump in here. Um, so the city of Arvada, specifically through their Arvada EDC, which is a separate legal entity. Has done this direct work with Manufacturers Edge. We're showing this as sort of a good point of, of reference for data, um, with the understanding that we would need to structure it a bit differently. But, um, Arvada has put in twenty-five thousand per year, and they've narrowed the businesses that they work with. On this manufacturing assistance to twenty-five or fewer employees, that is their specific parameter. The maximum that they contribute is a fifty percent, so the businesses, there's a cost share component to it. And the businesses have to agree to some ongoing monitoring to, to collect data. Um, but since they started that in twenty fourteen, these are the results, um, of that program. As I said, there's a specifically with Manufacturers Edge. So you can see that it has really helped as a retention device, um, it has also. Um, so you can see that it has really helped as a retention device. Um, it has also improved efficiencies. That's really one of the main. Angles that they take is how can they help, um, existing manufacturers be more lean? So it's a lot of Six Sigma and other similar efficiency programs. And sixty-four new jobs. So it's gone beyond just retaining, but also helping them truly grow. I think I'm leaving out this. So the direction that we are seeking from the board base is, is it's a sort of program generally that you see value in us pursuing? And if so, we would go through these, this development program and come back to you with a more fully baked, um, program for approval. Um, I really just wanted to gauge interest at this point as we're probably building out incentive tools. Happy to answer whatever questions you all might have.
I have a question about funding. So you're not coming with a funding ask. So this would, because this program, we would partner with somebody else to do the one-on-one coaching, like Manufacturers Edge to do the one-on-one coaching. That costs money, so.
So why is there not a money ask? Okay, so I'm going to explain a weird part of our budgeting, where it's coming from.
Yep.
So we come to you in executive session frequently, right? It's like, okay, there is a new business coming in. And here's how they score, and you're agreeing to a rebate on business personal property tax, and it gets put into an agreement. That is always based on performance standards. So, um, basically that they have a certain number of jobs at a certain wage level, et cetera, et cetera. We don't pay out money at that time. We have to go and perform, but we set aside the money in the budget as though they meet. The highest level of performance standards we've put in that agreement. So we get to the end of the year, as people have come in and said, fine, we've paid our taxes. No, we didn't actually have that many employees, so therefore they're getting less rebate money. We've still got that residual rebate money on hold. And so that's what we would tap into as that's money you've all already kind of spent in your budget. For economic development, it just didn't go out to a business because they couldn't meet their full performance standards. So we would plow it back into a different economic development incentive. Thank you.
I like how you put that. So, but it helped me understand this. So wait, so we would say, would this be like a condition to other incentives? To say that you have to engage with these folks? Or would this be more like a referral? Like we could theoretically refer somebody to SBA, SBDC?
It would, it would not really work as well as a condition, because those are usually, those agreements are for new businesses coming in. And this is a tool to work with existing manufacturing businesses to help them streamline, grow. So they're kind of different.
It's like, it's, then it's like, uh, this is a partner that we refer people to, like we would say, I'm going to refer you to SBDC for some consulting on your general business stuff.
And we do support the SBDCs, as you know.
Exactly. So I look at this as there's going to be some things in our menu of incentives, or at least, you know, uh, resources. It's almost like more of a resource than it would be truly incentive and say, here's your resources for you to succeed in Adams County. Some of them might be in the form of incentives, some might just be in form of referral and access, right?
It's part of our, we'd say it's really part of our retention strategy of being business friendly as we provide these resources to our businesses, which helps them stay in Adams County.
Is that what you put? That's what I'm trying to understand. Go ahead.
Well, I just thought, I'm not sure that everybody's clear on Jenny's, Jenny's trying to thread a needle because my office objects and gets involved in things. And that's because traditionally, economic development corps are separate organizations, right? And they're not the government. And so they don't have the same restrictions. Yes, that the government has. Because we are the government, we're Adams County, we can't aid private corporations. Other than those very specific things in statute like these, uh, property tax rebates that we're allowed to give. Okay. But generally, there's a constitutional prohibition against counties aiding private corporations. And so we can't do this grant program on our own, the way our bad. That's right. So we can't, Jenny's team can't just say, we'll run a grant program and we'll give business manufacturer five thousand and this one ten thousand and. And whatever. And so that's why she's talking about. Developing a program. I mean, it's still a little iffy, but we feel better about it, right? Where we're basically entering into a contract with a company that does this. So that company's being paid for a service. So it's not like we're just aiding that corporation. It's a typical contract. And then they select who they work with and they set the parameters and they dole out the money, kind of like we did with the small business loans, um, back in the day. So it's just by putting that intermediary in there, it's not county funds going directly to ABC Manufacturing.
Yes.
So we are giving money to Manufacturers Edge.
No, so, so for example, I mean, they have a fully baked program, right? We.
That's what Arvada is using.
That's what Arvada is doing, right? They're just going direct to Manufacturers Edge, saying, here you go, here's the money, run the program. And, and Arvada has a little more active role in selecting businesses. We wouldn't even want to go straight to Manufacturers Edge without doing a competitive process. So we would issue a notice of funding availability. Basically, hey, service providers. We have some money set aside to do this thing. If you can do this thing, please apply to us and we will look at your application. And then make an award of the funds for you to run the program. We're not aware right now of anybody besides Manufacturers Edge doing that. We want to make sure that it's an open and public opportunity.
So let me make it clear. Lowercase manufacturer support. Is what we would put this out for. It'll still have a cost associated with it that we're investing into that program. It would be us trying to support the private sector manufacturing, because it's a strategic goal of ours. And we would have a resource out there. It's not much different than if we give a little bit of money to SBDC. Well, it might be different because they're a nonprofit, but.
Manufacturers Edge is a nonprofit.
Well, so then I'm not sure we need to go through the process, but I understand where you're going, just to inoculate any sort of question of competitiveness is good for something. But then on the other side of nonprofits, we're also trying to do the same thing to support our nonprofit community through like Colorado Nonprofit Association and some of, you know? So as far as I look at it, we're just, we're creating some more resources for these different areas of our strategic partnerships. Once the private sector, one might be nonprofits, others might. So we will, there, there still will be an ask for us to fund the program. That we pay for.
And what I'm saying is there wouldn't be a funding ask on top of what our existing budget is, because we've.
This into the existing.
We would scale it accordingly, right? Like, okay, we know, we should, we have, for example, coming off the end of twenty-twenty-five, we might get to December and say, well. We had a hundred thousand of unclaimed rebate money. And then we work with finance to pull that forward, and that would be the funds to be used for doing the grant.
I personally think this is exactly the kind of stuff we should be leaning into, more than the marketing. You know, I've been pretty hard on us upon. Your group away from marketing, helping more with this kind of thing. I think this makes sense. My, my one question would be is, does it make sense that we do this rather than AC Rep? And why? And I'm still okay with it, but I just want to make sure if I ask that question, why is it best for us to do this particular program than someone like AC?
Well, partly because, um, AC Rep is leaning towards more, they, they don't get down to smaller, smaller entities like this. They, they welcome entities of all size to join the organization, but they're not a direct. The deliverer of funds, I mean, like the other, they, they were doing the enterprise funds and that now has come back to us here at the county. So I think it's, as I understand AC Rep, this is not the type, this is not, these aren't the size of businesses that they are. Targeting for this type of support, in my experience.
Two things. Old ACED was the traditional economic development, which focuses on. Primary jobs, primary, thank you. And they were supposed to also focus on the chamber function that used to exist with Metro North.
Yeah.
Um, so I see that piece, but I'm saying like, does this make sense that we provide this versus this being a membership's, uh, benefit through AC Rep? Either way, I'm just asking, in case we're asked.
Okay, sorry.
I like this idea of us doing this as a member of a support, but I'm just in case we're asked that question. I think it's fair to have an answer.
Does anybody else?
Maybe to Commissioner Henson's point, that if, having it as a membership benefit, you might, there might be a lot of small manufacturers that are not members, right? And so you would be losing out on that.
Whereas this would be available to any business that's manufacturing. There's an inclusivity issue.
Yeah.
I like it.
Okay, I think, I don't want to muddy the water, and I can leave the room, but you're going to.
You've earned it. So as we go forward and as the focus, you know. I hear your intentions, and how do we retain manufacturing? Where is business attraction and how is that funded? So the more we go, if we decide to lean in really heavy on the Colorado Air and Spaceport, depending where our, um. Could be a big thing with, uh, Hispanic Restaurant Association, um. The National Hispanic Restaurant Association, they're located here in Colorado, that's who met with us as far as training and upscaling. So where, where do we look at? Can this funding also be used for attraction? This is, are, are we looking at attraction? As we expand these newer industries, you know, warehousing logistics is huge. I don't know if they need that much support from us. Uh, that's slam dunk. Data centers is going to become a conversation at some point. I don't know where we're at on that, where legislation will go.
Saying, we're, we're producing Ben Fulgham's, actually, we're gonna larger policy paper for you in August, and then we have a study session scheduled on data centers in September. But, um, as Bill, go ahead and hand out the bingo card.
Okay.
Um, because, to your, to your question, right, there are some other conversations we'll still be having on some more attraction strategies. But I do think, even though this is, this is really talking about something we would be doing with existing businesses. There's something to be said for, when you have programs like this, it makes your community attractive to businesses coming in, right? So it, it does sort of still fit in attraction strategy as well.
So just you, because you said it's, it's retaining these businesses. So why manufacturing? Is there other businesses that we would want to keep? First, then, or like, I'm just curious, like, why, why choose manufacturing over any of the other types of businesses?
So this is because it's a program that already is developed, um, as one thing too often. But you'll remember, we talked last week, two, that it's all running together now. Um, in round one, we talked about doing an area of specific local concern and helping childcare. Alright, so, so we are looking for a whole suite of programs to help in various ways. This is just a program that already exists for manufacturing businesses, and we're trying to find a way to tap into that to help those. Not to the exclusion of others. We will continue to look for other. Other programs and tools to help other types of businesses.
And so this, this program was created in partnership with Arvada and Manufacturers Edge back in twenty-fourteen. And one of the things Glen's been trying to do over the last two or three years is to find ten communities, uh, in Metro Denver that would support this. So they could develop and grow the program. Um, so that's kind of what brought it to us was Manufacturers Edge saying, would Adams County be interested in this? And us saying, well, we couldn't pick you as a winner. We feel like we'd need to go out to a more competitive process, knowing that you may be the only organization in the state doing this.
Um. It's just our practice.
Yeah, it's our practice. Uh, but, but, you know, as Jenny was saying, this program's already developed. It's been around for approximately a decade. And they're looking to expand it into other communities, uh, in this portion of the state.
It's actually a national program.
Is it?
And that aligns with your focused business areas and manufacturing. No, I think we're, I think we're, obviously concur, right? We have consensus, or, or do you want to know?
Just think it's for me, in addition to what my question was, is that Julie really honed in on it, is the different areas of industry that we might be focusing on? That would be my only other thought.
It's an and not a or is the answer I got, but if you've, if we need to see the big picture.
That you'd like to see a similar.
Like a mapping of the targeted areas.
Okay.
Like, let's look at that. So.
Yeah.
Is that what you, like, would be that middle column, maybe?
Targeted redevelopment.
We're getting into a lot, so we're trying to break it into bite-sized, yeah, 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 he says to do that.
No, I, I think visual's good. You had the five targeted areas, manufacturers, one.
Of targeted industries?
That's, yes, I might be complaining targeted area and targeted industry.
They're different. This is meant to be geographically focused, target areas, which is not the conversation today, but we will have those. That CRA, CRA would be a good example of a target area strategy, geography. There are target industries, which I think's right here.
People place businesses, that was your triad.
So if you think about the triad, I would put this program in the business circle. I would put CRA in the place circle.
So how do we calculate a return on investment here? So like, I'm going back to the case study and impacts at Arvada. They have a twenty-five thousand dollar per year investment. And then this is since twenty-fourteen, this is how much they've. Increased sales. I mean, like, so I guess one of the things I'm kind of getting lost in here, and maybe it's my ignorance is. With the money we do have, how do we make the biggest impact is what my question is, and how do we do that? And, and maybe this is a great program to pilot and see how it goes along and, but I, I really am just trying to get a sense of the ROI. And, and how do I know that these decisions that we're making are, are going to bring the biggest impacts to Adams County specifically?
We don't know that we're going to know it on the front end. I think it's where just sort of the annual reporting back of how the program is going is important. And then there's a strategic decision to be made after you've given an opportunity, like, do we like this? Is it doing what we want it to do? And if not, you don't continue that forward, and we look for a different type of program. Um, it was appealing as we're trying to put together a toolbox for you as something that's already developed. And that we have some funds we can tap into to do something kind of on the scale of Arvada.
Okay.
And then track it over time. And that's actually part of what we would put in the scope for services with the NOFA is getting that data back so that we could share that with.
Okay, so we can't really have a more educated guest moving in to this?
Beyond how we've seen it perform.
No, no, we, we don't have a predictor, because people have to, we can tell people about it, but they still have to opt in to engage. I mean, so we don't, we, we don't know.
Okay, this is probably our best comparison at this point in time.
It's easy low hanging fruit because it already exists and.
Funding's already there.
Right.
Well, the funding's already, I mean. They can absorb it into the existing funding.
There's no ask today.
I'm okay with giving it a try.
I just think we have to try it, or we don't, we won't know unless we try it. We have to try it. And then we'll know, because then we can also look to expand. I mean, rather than saying, oh, we aren't helping the other areas of industry, we can.
Yeah.
Yeah, as we, as, you know, depending on its success and how much we want to invest in that type of.
So here's enthusiasm, and we'll come back with the parameters before it's launched. So you'll have another bite at the apple.
Great. Sounds good.
Is, uh, the community loan pool. So, uh, many of the folks in this room were part of a presentation that occurred last September. Uh, it's a partnership that Adams County has. It's a, it's a revolving loan fund that's managed by Colorado Enterprise Fund. They came last September and gave a presentation, the performance of that. It's been in existence since twenty-sixteen. And today, we're not asking for anything. We just want to give everyone an update on how it's performing this year. And then we will invite Nim Patel and the Colorado Enterprise Fund, uh, team out later this year to give a more comprehensive holistic presentation. But essentially, it's, it's a, a low interest, low cost access to funding between ten thousand and a hundred and a million dollars. It is, as I said, it's low interest with flexible repayment terms between three to ten years. Uh, typically, when you're looking at hard money loans or traditional loans, there are higher interest rates, lower period of time to pay them off. So this really helps more entrepreneurs and startup type businesses. And that what's really important also to note is that a, a component of receiving these funds is that the business that receives them must go through some level of training. In coaching with a small business development center. Um, so there's a large partnership that extends, extends beyond just receiving funds. Uh, and these funds can be. Uh and these funds can be used for working capital, machinery equipment, uh for your leasehold improvements, to purchase business and business equipment. Uh for business real estate and property taxes and for business debt collections. And so just real quick, an an update on how it's performing, the total revolving loan fund in these dollars state inside Adams County. Is four point two million dollars. And that was a a a match between Adams County and several of our municipalities. At two point one million dollars and then C E F matched uh our contributions with their own two point one million dollars for that total of four point two. Uh there are currently one hundred and one active loans. Uh of those, there's an outstanding balance of just under four million dollars. So most of the fund is currently loaned out to businesses in Adams County. And of those, a breakdown is forty-three are startup companies, uh four veteran owned, forty-nine are minority owned. Forty-four are women-owned businesses, forty-five are low income owners. Uh and then two of them deal in the healthy food um access ar- area. Uh in the totality since twenty sixteen, since this fund was created, these dollars have been loaned out two hundred and eleven times. Generating over twelve million dollars being cycled through the Adams County economy for these small businesses. And the average loan is right around fifty-seven thousand dollars uh for for the average business loan. Uh because of this, they've either created or retained over seventeen hundred jobs. And as I said earlier, there is a requirement that these businesses go through coaching and training with a small business development center. So of the uh of the two hundred and eleven loans, there's been over fifteen hundred uh hours spent with coaching and training. Um and then that's really all we have on that. If there's any questions, be happy to to answer what we can. Uh but as I said, we have invited Nim and his group out later this year to come give a more thorough presentation and talk about the future of this program as well.
Great, I like it.
Moving on to um a pilot that she'll uh some of you will recall, we talked about. Um and this actually builds pretty heavily on the conversation earlier with with Brian and Janet. Um one of the things we have, of course, seen happen as as certain. Uh capital projects have gone long is that it impacts the businesses um immediately off of those roadways. And so we collaborated very closely with Public Works um on developing a program that still. Met our statutory limitations, right? We weren't gonna be able to go give direct um funding to businesses to. Say, offset impacts of construction, but rather, could we do something that was truly providing a public benefit? By supporting them in their advertising and communication so that the public would still know how to access them. And that's really why it's called the Construction Wayfinding Grant, is that the intent was to provide as much benefit to the public. As we were to the business owner and making sure that everybody knew how to get there. Um so this was a pilot that we started um just this year. The maximum grant amount for eligible businesses was twenty-five hundred dollars. Um Victoria Haley, our business development officer, has really been the the boots on the ground um in talking with the. Property owners, the business owners um that were impacted, making sure they knew how to apply for these eligible funds. Um seven businesses had received that grant to date, so we still have some ongoing funds in there. This is also um done through that residual rebate money, trying to find a way to make sure we were continuing to use it for economic um benefit. Here are businesses that have received those construction wayfinding grants, so. Nicholson Deli, I know, is one that you all heard from a lot. Certainly did have an extended construction period and and Bill was out there a number of times talking with them. Um it doesn't completely alleviate the difficulty, right, of having construction going on outside your business. But this is a lot about showing says that the county cares and is aware that there is a need there. So it's as much about acknowledgement and being a partner through the process for them um as anything else. And if there's anything you wanna share from a words you've heard or.
No, I mean, one of the main things that these businesses are oftentimes um either calling economic development or being routed to us. And they're they're upset that, you know, their driveways are closed or customers don't know about a detour, don't know how to get to them anymore. So really, this grants, when we talk to these businesses and we go out and we talk to them about how to use these funds. Um it's really about, you know, putting up signs that show access routes or detours or something in addition. It's open during construction, just signs to help the customers know that even though there's road projects that might impact access. These businesses are still open. Um so it's it's really just a gesture to show them that we. We are empathetic towards them, we are sensitive to their needs. Uh we understand that these are impacting them and just trying to help them get customers from outside the project area to their business throughout construction. And it's been very well received by the businesses that have applied for it. Um we just started doing this program about three months ago. We've had the seven businesses. And as Jenny said, it's very targeted. We didn't advertise this countywide because you have to be. Uh you have to have direct frontage or access impacted through a a capital construction project. So what we do is that when a project's ongoing or occurring and it's impacting roadways or access. As Jenny said, Victoria goes out there, she uses this as her business retention and and expansion visits to talk to businesses, to express. Uh things that we can do to help them, and this is just one of the tools in her toolbox to really help um support existing businesses to make sure that they stay in business.
It was also appreciated by our Public Works crews that were out there that they could say, here's who you need to talk to, right? And they had some way of responding, so.
Um I, Heidi. This changed over time?
Originally, it was proposed as a uh impact grant, cash. And our office had concerns about that because generally speaking, we don't wanna get in the business of acknowledging that we think we have an obligation. To pay businesses for impacts due to road projects, right?
Yes.
Cuz we don't have to, and you're setting a bad precedent if you say we do. Um so it was our suggestion that they move to more of a. Uh we'll help you with wayfinding, we'll help you with signage and not.
Yeah.
Not talk about construction impact.
It's a marketing grant rather than an impact grant.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which has public benefit as well.
Right.
Um the last program that we wanna share with you today is one that we've been working on throughout this year. This was a really done in partnership between um the economic development team and the housing policy and community investments team. So uh it was last year, around July of last year, that the annual action plan went fo- forward to the Board of County Commissioners. And as part of that, there was this discussion about can we use uh community development block grants to help support business revitalization in concert with. Other activities and initiatives that we're doing. So this really is a, it's a program that provides financial incentives to commercial property owners and business operators. To make the exterior building improvements and address code violations within a designated targeted area along Federal Boulevard corridor. This is intended to support economic development and enhance the quality of life for the residents living in that area. Um so again, this came forward uh to the board originally in July thirtieth, we received direction to move forward with development program. And we spent the last eight or nine months, yeah, year, really talking about, all right, how do we do this in concert with, between code enforcement? Uh economic development, housing policy, community investment, how do we utilize these C D B G funds? What what are there gonna be, the stipulations and strings tied, training staff and economic development to do this? There's been a tremendous amount of coordination. And as was put into the annual action plan, it was anticipated to launch uh this September fall, so we're right at the point where this is ready to launch. Um again, it's it's launching as a pilot initiative with a hundred thousand dollars in C D B G funds that was approved as part of the annual action plan. And it offers matching grants to help with the appearance of these buildings. And it really supports what the county's doing through achieving compliance together, the ACT program. Uh through what the community economic development teams are working on with the Federal Boulevard Corridor Plan. With the Federal Boulevard Neighborhood Economic Development Strategy. As well as really helps further what we talked about in the twenty twenty-two Conference of Plan. As far as identifying Federal Boulevard as one of our strategic corridors for investment. So we really felt like this program helps move all of those initiatives forward. Uh a little bit about the program, and and this is not a a a unique program nationwide. There are a lot of communities throughout the country that utilize C D B G funds for facade grant type programs. So we've matched what a lot of them do. It's targeted within an area of redevelopment, so you'll see on the screen uh where we say targeted area. That is the stretch of buildings that front Federal Boulevard between the uh between the Denver city limits, all the way up to the Westminster city limits. Uh that is well within the area that we've been studying for the last year and a half as far as for the Federal Boulevard Corridor Study. And the Neighborhood Economic Development Study. So we really tried to understand as far as inventory of buildings and ownership and use of buildings, first vacancy. Trying to understand these buildings and and what we felt like we as the county could do to move these forward into having uh reasonable uses. Uh that support the area around. And so it's a one-to-one matching grant, so for every dollar that the private business owner invests, they'd be uh able to get reimbursed a dollar of the C D B G funds. And that it's up to twenty thousand dollars per project. Uh that the funds may only be used for exterior repairs. Now, that is a requirement of the funds because they're federally funded through the facade program for C D B G. It has to be exterior improvements. It can include lighting and ADA access as well. But most communities really use it as a beautification program to help quality of life in the appearance of of some struggling corridors. Um further down the line, so all projects must be reviewed by what we're calling the Business Revitalization Grant Review Committee. It would be made up of staff members who review these applications as they come in. Any application that's being recommended for approval would go to Jenny as the director for final approval before grants could be awarded. That the grants are distrib- uh dis- dispersed on a reimbursement uh basis. Which means that they must finish the project before they can get reimbursed a dollar. So they come forward with an application, we review the application. If approved, they'd go out and get a contractor, sign the contracts, do the work, submit the receipts. And then we could reimburse them for fifty percent up to twenty thousand dollars.
It's, there are some similarities between how that operates and we think of how we do our minor home repair program.
Yes. And so as a federally funded program, the Davis-Baking prevailing wages and fringe benefit requirements would apply, which generally require higher wages. That you'd see just on a typical construction project, and that can be for anything from painting to a man, to a a a company that installs windows. To someone fixing the brick, uh any of those things, those those uh individuals doing the labor must be paid consistent with the Davis-Bacon requirements. And that program applications are expected to open uh Q four of twenty twenty-five. Any questions on that particular one, especially for the uh board members who aren't here? We also do have, if there's any questions about the C D B G funding, I I do know that we have members. Out here that that were very instrumental in helping us um create a legal framework to to manage this program. And uh and will help the economic development staff uh training on on the Davis Bacon requirements and uh in in fulfilling this program.
Is a similar program allowable under CRA? Cause I know urban renewal does allow for facade programs or I think Brian did one under their U R A.
It's not specifically, it, there's nothing in CRA language that would prohibit it. I think that would be a strategic conversation. So for example, we start deploying this in the federal corridor.
Sure.
As we stand up a county revitalization plan for that same area. If you want to ensure that that is being used for other things, so you're not duplicating efforts, that would be something we could do through that plan. Or maybe you want to, I mean, um so it can be addressed through how that given plan area defines its programs and activities.
I think this is a great use of the community development block grant funding. And to really, as improvements on Federal Boulevard come through um the transportation portion, I think that this is a good way to lift up that community.
I like it.
Could we, as we go through some of these? In a year, whatever, when we do our next milestones, can you bring back examples to show how this money was used? So you do the before and after pictures of these things? Cause then we can show outcomes and activity.
Yeah, and that's something that we're really excited about as far as staff with our uh our our impact report that we do every year. Is making sure that we're getting great photos and reporting all of these great um outcomes of these programs in a publishable document. That not only you can see, but the general public can see as well.
Exactly.
Thank you so much. And so for next steps, um you know, we're we're right around the halfway point as far as rolling out the incentives and the strategic planning. We have a couple more presentations coming up. We're gonna be engaging with you and the public on a lot of the direction we're receiving throughout the rest of this year. Um we 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 want to bring, as we've said previously, a formal framework. Um very short and brief, but to really outline what economic incentives uh exist. And what framework exists to support businesses of all size and wanting to locate in Adams County and be successful in Adams County. We'd uh we'd recommend that move forward into adoption so that it has the backing of the Board of County Commissioners as we're showing that to the public. And that, uh as we've said a couple of times, we use the Economic Development Impact Report on an annual basis already. But we're really thinking of from a staff perspective on growing that and advancing that, enhancing that to a point that it really reports back. On all the great things that the team are are working on. Um as far as upcoming presentations, again, over the next two months, we'll be bringing a couple of things forward on counter revitalization authorities. And then working with the CAST team and our housing policy team on the incentives uh that relate to supporting those uh initiatives of the county. We'll be bringing those to you later this year as well.
I have a question. Uh it sounds like at the end, we're gonna have some sort of framework deliverable. Um that could be reflected in a document and on a website, almost like, hey, come here and look at how. All the different resources that we have. Could could you also share if there are some other? How do we compare to our peers, Arapahoe? You know, older Douglas, Jeffco, El Paso, Mason. I'd love to see kind of like how what you're creating compares that, cuz we might also be able to steal some other ideas too.
It'll, it's gonna look a lot like apples to oranges to bananas to papayas because you have throughout the state. Um that E D Cs that are very localized, you have regional E D Cs, they have their tools. So for example, like Jefferson County, right, runs all of their stuff through their Jefferson County E D C. That operates differently than a local government economic development office. So what we can do, sort of that survey, but just realize it's not one-to-one comparisons in a lot of cases. Um but I think it's helpful for you to see kind of the whole spectrum of what's out there in the economic development ecosystem as far as. Incentive tools, right? Even if we can't use them, it's still helpful to know where they exist.
I'm also uh sensitive to the fact that if we were creating a list of things that cities can do that we can't. And so if there's some cer- certain legal or statutory requests that we may wanna share with some of our legislators. That allow us to get enumerated powers and capabilities that we don't have yet. I'm looking for that too. We have our wish list, right? Have to do it all in one year, but just add it to the list.
Well, and we're like, when we ask for a policy suggestion, should we bring?
Yeah.
To C C A, C C I, et cetera, and we're mostly. You know, as we're waiting for CRA to complete, I think that we want to complete our own version of that before we request something new. So looking forward to completing our CRA framework as well.
I didn't mean it as a distraction, I, but we still create our list of someday.
Yep.
Wish list.
But yeah, like what's next? What what do we, what do we discern is the next most important thing?
Somebody else might take that, a different county might make it theirs, you know, just to make it proud.
Yeah, that's true.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.